The City Council Work Studies Session here at the Tempe His Museum for October 24th, 2019. The first item on our agenda is our call to the audience for the Issue Review Session Items. Audience members have up to three minutes. If you would like to, I don't have any cars, but if anyone would like to address this and any items listed on our agenda, could you please get my attention? Seeing none, I will close that portion and go on to Issue Review Session Items. And the first item is Achieve 65 Tempe.
All right, well, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Ray Raymond, and I'm the Education, Family and Community Support Manager within Human Services. I'm happy to share an update on our Achieve 65 Tempe Initiative and to review new local data sets and data visualizations from the ASU Decision Center for Educational Excellence. Joining me today are Rachel Yanoff from Achieve 60 AZ. We have Luke Tate and Joe O'Reilly from the ASU Decision Center. And I do want to recognize in the audience, we have such wonderful support from our education partners. We have Tempe Elementary Superintendent Christine Bush with us. We have Tempe Union High School District Board Member Sandy Lowe. We have Tempe Union Staff Mark Kulik and Sean McDonald and Safali Patel from ASU. And I just want to recognize them and thank them for their support. So our presentations today aligns with City Council Priority Number Three, which is Quality of Life. And it addresses Performance Measure 3.09, which is to achieve a rate of 65% for Tempe residents who have a post-secondary certificate, two-year degree or four-year degree by the year 2030. And just as a note, when we look at this data, we're specifically looking at adults ages 25 to 64. And so I'm going to turn it over to Rachel, and she's going to give us a little bit of background about Achieve 60 AZ.
Welcome. Hello. Thank you for letting me be here. I guess "welcome" is the wrong word. I appreciate the time. So I'm the Executive Director of Achieve 60 Arizona, which is the big statewide post-secondary attainment goal for all of Arizona. You all in Tempe have been our leaders in how that looks at a local community adopting and adjusting and looking at data and really creating your own vision and your own goal for your own community. So we applaud that, and I will probably brag on you throughout this entire time. This really came about because we, as a state and education community, started asking the question, sort of, to what end? When will we know that education is working? When will we know that we're winning? We've talked a lot about how we are bad at things, but we want to have an answer to when we're good at it. And so the answer really came about this idea of a vision for Arizona where we'd have a thriving workforce, where every single family would have economic freedom and power to make decisions for themselves and their families. And that really comes through education, having that tool in your tool belt to have choice in your job and have that economic freedom. So the vision is really about every Arizonan having a great life. It's hard to measure a great life, so the proxy we measure is certificates, licenses, and degrees, because that is a post-secondary measure that we have the ability to count. As an alliance across Arizona, we're over 100, we're actually about 110 partners everywhere, from all of our educational partners in the private and public sector, to our chambers, to our cities and counties and towns. We have our tribal communities as partners, and also a lot of industry, because we know that at the end of the day, when our young people or our adults go back to school, the goal is for them to have that career, that opportunity, not just have a piece of paper that they can wave around in the air. So we do four things at Achieve 60 Arizona. We're nonprofit, we're nonpartisan, and there's two people there. So we are very narrow in our scope, partly because we have not learned how to trick time into being longer. So we make sure we give information to smart people who make decisions. We want to give information and informed reporting and data, and we really just do that in partnership with some really smart people also sitting at this table. Increasing public support, because there are still communities we go into where there is a resistance to the idea that post-secondary education is critical for the future. And making sure that when we have things that work, we build off of those, not try to reinvent or throw the baby out with the bathwater. So those are the jobs that we do at Achieve 60 Arizona. So here's the big scary numbers. 60% by 2030 actually sounds pretty catchy. It is pretty easy to say, "We can do that, no problem." When I was applying for the job, that was the number I saw. Once I got the job, they said, "So we've done the math, and that means a million more people." That is not a small number. And when you translate that for Tempe with a 65 by 2030 goal, again, rough math, but it's about 26,000 more Tempeans that are moving to that place of having a credential, a license, or degree. Again, really rough math. It's probably about half of those 26,000 in Tempe will come through the traditional pipeline, right? Those are students who are going to be educated in our system, they're going to go on to post-secondary. And as we all collectively across the K-12 and higher ed and PK, truly, spectrum, are doing better and better and better at our jobs, those numbers will come from the pipeline. But a good part of that chunk is adult learners and thinking about adults who need to rescale and train up for the next sort of future of jobs. Okay, so why we do this work? There's the economic argument always, and there's the sort of like the people that we serve. So I'll start with the economic argument, mostly just because I got a degree in economics that makes my dad happy. So first of all, there's a really good reason to ensure people are educated and have jobs that meet that education level. We know that if we were just to match, excuse me, white attainment and Latino attainment in Arizona, it's a $2.3 billion annual return on our investment in just that one category. If we were to do this work perfectly, and every single person who hits that benchmark, we hit the 60% mark, and every single person who has that higher education has a job that perfectly matches their skills, we would see a $7.6 billion return on our investment annually. These are all living in perfect world scenarios, and we know that we never actually live in perfect world scenarios. But as we all think about there's not enough resources to do the work we want to do in education at large, I'll take half of any of those numbers and I'll still be really happy. So this work is worthy work, even if we are getting close to it. And then the last bullet, and we all live in ASU's backyard, so we know this, the return on investment for a new graduate is really high. Is, you know, and again, these are based on a four-year degree. We didn't get the data at the time to do a two-year degree model, but for a person earning a four-year degree, they're going to invest back into the community, you know, $660,000, like their earnings and their ability to contribute to the state. And when you think about the fact that a public education, kindergarten through post-secondary in rough numbers is about a $300,000 investment through our state, through our local community, it's a two-and-a-half times return on investment, which I think most of us would say is a pretty good return. So always a good reason. I will also just say, there are faces and people and names behind all of this, and that is the moral reason to do this. There are children and families and moms and dads and grandmas and grandpas who, by getting more education, will have a better life, and that's the other reason we should do this work.
Yeah, so as a city, we aim to help our residents be prepared to achieve their career and life goals. And we know that when an individual is able to do that, they become a thriving and contributing member of our community. But in order to fully thrive, individuals need to be able to support themselves financially. So educational attainment has long-term impact on a person's income-earning ability over their lifetime. And as this chart shows, the more education a person has, the less likely they are to be unemployed and the higher their earnings are. So where are we now? So presently, our baseline is at 58.2%. And as you all know, Tempe City Council adopted the goal of 65% in June of 2015, making it the first jurisdiction in Arizona to set a higher goal than the state. So congratulations. When we look back to 2014, we can see an incremental increase every year in degree attainment. The large jump between 2016 and 2017 is due to a new tracking methodology adopted by the Arizona Board of Regents to include certificates and licenses at 6.1% of the total. So Rachel will talk to us a little bit about the four pillars.
Yeah, so meeting this goal is not going to happen by one thing or one silver bullet. It's going to take a concerted effort across the full spectrum of education and workforce. So when I, again, when I saw that million number, I got scared and realized we had to figure out a way to make the work less scary to me. And the way we did that was to chunk it and to say that there are sort of four different pathways to think about how this work gets done, and they all have to happen concurrently. So no one's allowed to take their foot off the gas pedal. So first of all, we know that there is this wonderful thing in America, and it is called public education, and it is a wonderful opportunity that we have committed to our citizens to make sure that we have a thriving citizenry. And that has to continue. That is early childhood through high school. That in and of itself, we should just applaud all of our partners. They're doing a great job, and we want to help them do more. And that need, you know, hitting our goals of 90% high school graduation, ensuring that all of our students are leaving high school prepared for the next step, all of those things are the right steps, and we want to see that happen more. And we just at Achieve 60 basically just say, "We love you and keep doing it." Post-secondary access and success is really acknowledging that for our students, they need to not only be able to get to college, but be successful in. And again, we have phenomenal partners. I don't think we have institutions across the country that even come close to the institutions we have here in Arizona for the amount of work they're doing to ensure access and success. But there's still more to be done across the whole spectrum when we think about all of our universities and all of our community colleges and all of our private post-secondary. So how do we ensure those numbers are continuously increasing and students are leaving with that degree or that credential that they started their pursuit for? We really need to ensure that the business environment is engaged. So if we do hit this magical number in Tempe of 65% of our citizenry being highly educated, ensuring that there is a job in Tempe for every single one of those people, so that those people stay here, spend their money here, buy homes here, raise their kids here, that has to happen in tandem, right? So it's a little bit of a chicken and an egg, because while we need to make sure we have this educated citizenry, we also need to make sure that the jobs are being, you know, brought here, and we are that attractive place for people to have those jobs. And there's a lot that employers can do. And so we've been really excited to see through a lot of the work you've already done with, you know, College Connect and the internship program that you've put in place in tandem with the Chamber, to have young people get work experiences early, whether they're getting paid, whether they're staying in high-needs sectors. Awesome work. That's another way that business can have a real role in increasing attainment through their own development of the pipeline. And then the last category is really thinking through big systems and structures. So one thing that we sort of applaud again is the fact that as a big system, as a big structure of government, you all have owned education, set a goal, set a goal that's ambitious and higher than the state goal, and own that there are things within your own purview you can do. Those are kind of system kind of level work we want to help other communities do, also acknowledging that there are gaps. And so when we see gaps in our attainment goals between our Latino students and our white students, how are we addressing those gaps systemically? So that's what that big systems and structures bullet. And I would just again stress that none of these are more important than the other, and none of them can wait. All of them have to happen in tandem. And as a council, I've just been so proud, and I live in Tempe, so I'm even going to brag as a resident, I'm proud to live in a place where that is actually a priority that our local government is taking on. So there's my soapbox, and just keep doing it.
So as Rachel started, the city has already invested in so many strategies that focus on these pillar areas. So we know that, you know, we support our youngest residents in accessing high-quality educational opportunities to assist them in being prepared for academic success, and we continue to provide those supports both in and out of school for youth and their parents. College Connect, it serves as a community resource for both college and career, focusing on messaging the importance of completing the FAFSA, which you'll hear a little bit more about later. That's the Free Application for Federal Student Aid, and providing one-on-one assistance with our College Connect mentors. And additionally, we're referring students to ASU's new Project Benjamin, so the Benji Chatbot for real-time FAFSA support. And just as a shameless plug, we're holding a College Connect workshop this Saturday, October 25th, 26th, excuse me, from 10 to 12, with free one-on-one FAFSA help. So if you need help completing your FAFSA, please go to the library on Saturday morning, and we are happy to help you. Tempe also has several workforce supports through our Career Ready Tempe, and those are paid internships for high school students and local businesses. We have a partnership with Arizona At Work to have a youth and an adult workforce specialist available to connect residents not only with work opportunities, but also training or educational opportunities. And our Tempe's BEST program looks to connect individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities to jobs within the city. We also have our Public Service Promise partnership with Achieve 60, and we're looking to encourage our own city employees to further their education by using tuition reimbursement with the hopes of advancing their careers within the city. And finally, our partners in this work, and so many of them are here today, are completely vital to its success. We continually look at metrics to assure that all members of our community have the supports needed to achieve at equitable rates. And so I'm going to turn it over to Joe and Luke, and they're going to take us through the Decision Center's high school outcomes pool.
Mr. Mayor, Council. I'm Luke Tate, Executive Director of Opportunity Initiatives at ASU. I oversee a series of initiatives focused on expanding access to educational and economic opportunity, mostly through leveraging emerging scientific and technological innovations. In this case, one of those initiatives is the Decision Center for Educational Excellence. Very fortunate to be joined by the Director of the Decision Center, Joe O'Reilly. We're incredibly lucky at ASU to have been able to bring Joe on board. The goal of the Decision Center is very clear. It is to raise the overall level of educational outcomes we're achieving here in the state of Arizona. We are simply not achieving the educational outcomes that we need for the economic and social success that we, the Arizonans deserve. We also are underserving many of our communities, our Latino kids, our African-American kids, our rural students, our Native American students. Students with disabilities are inequitably served by Arizona's educational systems. And so we seek to raise the overall performance of those systems and reduce the inequities within those systems, largely by facilitating, both at the practitioner level and at the policymaker level, better data-driven and evidence-driven decision-making around educational design. So not just policy, how do we design our system? What sort of outcomes are we going to achieve? What design can achieve those outcomes? So we're mostly here to introduce ourselves to you and want you to know that we are ready to be a resource to you. We are more than happy to invite you to come on over to ASU to pour through the numbers with us, to dig through this tool and tools to come with us. We have begun our work with this particular tool that we're going to present to you on high-school-level outcomes. So we are looking at school by school, what outcomes were we seeing across the state? We're looking at 2016, we're now looking at 2017 with the most recent data available. And what factors are shaping those outcomes? So we're focused on two primary outcomes. High school graduation rate, are our kids actually getting out of school? And then post-secondary attainment, are we seeing the Achieve 60 goal? Are we achieving that goal? And what are all the factors that shape that? And so with this tool that we've built, and the team has done an incredible job on it, we have now, you can see up on the screen, every single high school in the state of Arizona. That's every blue dot. And then within that, and again, we'd welcome you to come on over and work with us, you can choose any subset of schools you could possibly imagine. Choose all the schools with 50% or more of their students free and reduced lunch. You could choose all the schools that have a 50% or higher Hispanic population. You could choose all the schools that have 75% white population. You could choose all the schools in a particular county. You could choose all the schools in a particular district, however you want to slice it. Today, what we've done is we've chosen all the schools within metro Tempe. And so those are the maroon dots that we're highlighting here, within the sea of blue dots. Maroons seem pretty.
So let me just point out that these are our schools with Tempe addresses within the city of Tempe. So it has the Tempe Union High Schools that are within the city of Tempe. It does not have the high schools that are in the, that have a Phoenix address. So it has all your charter schools as well as your district schools. So it's the one place where you see all the schools combined as we go through.
Within your physical boundaries.
Vice Mayor Cuyi.
Well, we do have a Tempe school high school that's within a Phoenix, that's in a Phoenix address.
Two.
For two, yeah.
Just for this purpose, it's just showing.
We could include those or not include those. For this purpose, we included all the schools within the political boundary of the city of Tempe.
You could also alternatively choose Tempe district schools.
Right, okay.
So first, we ask the question, and could the folks with a keyboard, please press Control Minus or the open apple sign minus to zoom it out. There we go, thank you very much. Please zoom in one more.
One more plus.
There we go. So first, we're showing you the community context. This is drawing on the attendance zone for each school. If you were to choose, for example, schools with 50% or more free and reduced lunch all across the state, it would be showing you the attendance zone for all of those schools across the state. More or less, this is showing you Tempe's overall earnings and employment relative to education level. As Rachel was pointing out earlier, folks with factors to free or higher both have much lower unemployment rates and much higher overall income, as do those with associate's degree or some college, relative to high school grads and those with less than high school degree. I would note, just with respect to the figure that Rachel mentioned, that we need to reach a million Arizonans with a certificate. I want you to know how achievable that is. There are a million Arizonans that have some college credit. And some folks think, "Oh, that's someone who tried a community college class, but they weren't able to hack it." Of that million, 800,000 of them have more than a year's worth of credit. They're more than halfway to an associate's degree. So if we can connect with those working adults who are working learners, they're not all that far away from a degree. You're also able here with the tool to see the overall household income for the area. You can see many high-income households, but also 29% of the households in this area are earning less than $30,000.
These are adults, households with adults, so it's not the college student, it might be some graduate students.
Now, what we're showing you here is, again, more community-level context. So what sort of educational achievement improvements or declines have you seen over time? As you can see here in Tempe, this is population by education level. In 2016, the graduate and professional degree-achieving population had grown by 3.89% relative to 1990. You know, 4% increase in folks with graduate professional degrees. That's pretty impressive. Another 2% increase in folks with bachelor's degrees. So this is, again, just giving you some context. In the city of Tempe, as we think about high school outcomes that they're currently achieving, what's the surrounding community like? Well, it's a community that's seen significant improvement in educational attainment over time. We also recognize that there are other factors, from exposure to violence and lead paint to exposure to air pollution, that can affect how kids are coming into the classroom. Those kids who are encountering more exposure to violence in their community can experience allostatic load, which is a physiological phrase that simply means cortisol and adrenaline dumping into the brain to make it harder for neural connections to form. Forming of neural connections is what we call learning. So if kids are exposed to violence, if they're exposed to lead paint early on, if they're exposed to high levels of air pollution that can increase incidence of asthma, they're then less likely to be in the classroom. And so this is in the tool in part because we know that educators are aware that there are many factors in the community that are affecting then the outcomes that those educators are achieving in their classrooms. Those also include exposure to childhood poverty, the percentage of grandparents raising children. Now, this is one that is a bit of a proxy. We see a much higher percentage of grandparents raising children when parents are incarcerated or dealing with other personal challenges. We've seen a spike in this nationwide recently as a result of the increase in opiate abuse and opiate crisis. We can also look at factors like what percentage of students have moved in the last year. Now, I grew up here in Phoenix. In the district that I grew up in, we had a 40% turnover rate from September to May. 40%. So of the kids walking into that classroom, four in 10 weren't there at the end of the year, yet we're wanting that feature to be evaluated on the basis of his or her student's growth. So here in Tempe, you can see a higher percentage, 21.7%, of families moved in the last year relative to the state and national averages. So we just wanted to provide some of those.
We have one question, Vice Mayor.
I'm sorry, could we go back to the air pollution measure? So we're at 9.5 in Tempe?
9.1.
9.1.
Which is meaningfully higher than the state and national average. You know, we would note, this is also a city that is dealing with the challenge of being bounded on all sides by major freeways and having.
It says 9.5, though. Does anybody else say that? I don't, maybe. It says 9.5.
It went down.
It might be that a different subset of the geography was chosen.
Yeah, but it's right under, I mean, everything else. Well, hmm, no, lead paint is 0.1 selected, and it's 11.1 there. I'm not sure our slide.
Are these measured with the downtown area or?
Maybe the developmental set we used, as we're developing this and adding 2017. So there may have been some slight changes as we're updating it.
Okay. But I just had a question. Did you get that information from the Maricopa County?
No, it's actually, this is from the Environmental Protection Agency tied to census tracts. We tied census tracts to school boundaries. So it's, these are all the census tracts within Tempe, who's basically the centroid, the center of that census tract was within the city of Tempe.
But the PM 2.5 levels have to come, they most likely come from the county that does our monitoring, right?
Yes, but they probably report it to the EPA.
Ultimately, we drew it down from the EPA.
Okay.
And you also have the major airport here with, on your north boundary that's also contributing to that.
So recognizing those many contextual factors that shape what can happen and what does happen in a classroom, we then enable the user, in this case, the user has selected all the high schools within Tempe, to see where those schools are relative to other schools in the state. So first, we're looking at the college-going rate. I'm sorry.
Sorry, just clarification. The source of your data for what you're about to go through now, is it census, but what else?
The source of what we're, for this slide, is the Arizona Board of Regents gives us college-going rate. And they, this is the college-going rate for the class of 2016. They have the class of 2017, which we've just added, and 2018 hasn't been released yet.
What about for the historical educational attainment?
That's coming from the National Center for Ed Statistics, and the Arizona Department of Education reports to them. They clean it up and make it, make sure everything's right, and then they report it. And so here we have free and reduced lunch rate, which came from Arizona Department of Ed. That's a proxy for low income. So it's, those people are within 150, 185% of the federal poverty level. And so these are school-average rates, and each dot represents an Arizona school. You have a lot of schools, a lot of schools on the zero line. That's mostly small alternative schools and charter schools that don't offer free and reduced lunch, so they don't have a rate.
And some virtual schools.
Yeah. The virtual schools are actually counted under a virtual category. We originally had those in cities, but it took Chandler's rate, graduation rate from 91% down to 63%, and we said that wasn't, that couldn't be right. But it was one major charter company, whose virtual school, whose rate was so low, it lowered the whole city of Chandler by 30 points. And so we said, "Okay, virtual schools are separate."
So here, what we're looking at are two charts relative to the outcome that we really care about here, college-going, are students moving on to college after they graduate? And as you can see, there is some relationship between the poverty level of the school. So on the X-axis, you have the percent free and reduced lunch, and the college-going, which is on the Y-axis. There is some downward trend, but I would just note, there are plenty of schools where you have very, very high poverty rates and still an incredibly high college-going rate. One standout, of course, is in San Luis, down on the border, huge success story, where 83% of the students are free and reduced lunch, but 76% go on to college. So there are lots of schools with high poverty that are still sending many students to college. The schools with white dots around them are the schools that are physically located within Tempe. And you can see that trend is largely true with those schools as well.
And most of the schools that are lower college-going rates, around 20% less, those are mostly alternative schools that happen to be within the city of Tempe.
Now, the other, Marie mentioned earlier, of primary importance to the Achieve 60 project Rachel is leading, the FAFSA, the Federal Application for Free Student Aid. And the question is simply, does filling out the FAFSA have a positive effect on students then going on to college? Now, this is not necessarily in this chart showing causation, but we can see a strong correlation where in schools with more students completing FAFSA, many more of those students are going on to college. While this chart alone does not prove causation, we were able to dig into, within the schools across Arizona, what a higher FAFSA completion rate could mean for a particular school. For every 10 kids that are filling out the FAFSA statewide, an extra 2.2 are moving on to college. In majority Hispanic or majority low-income schools, for every 10 kids filling out the FAFSA, 3, 2.7, but we never send a seventh of a kid to college, three kids are going on to college. That's a really positive impact. We've also seen in states like Tennessee and Louisiana, where they've made mandatory FAFSA completion or 100% FAFSA completion a goal, we've seen strong impact, increase in college-going. So a lot to be proud of here in Tempe's schools of improving FAFSA rate and as such, improving college-going.
That top-right one is much higher than some of the other similar schools.
And here now, we're looking at some other factors in the schools that seem to have a strong relationship with college-going, I'm sorry, with high school graduation rate. So just in terms of where our state's goals are, we have a goal of 70% of our students going on to college. We have a goal of 90% of our students graduating high school. So this group of schools up here in this corner are the schools where we're achieving that goal. Now, these goals, 90% graduation rate, 70% going on to college, that's just. Now, these goals, 90% graduation rate, 70% going on to college, that's just baseline what it takes to have a successful economy these days. In Arizona, on the order of 40,000 of our kids go to those schools, about 12, 13% of our overall high school students. So we have a lot of work to do improving performance in this cohort here if we want to have the kind of economy that everybody in Arizona desires. Now, we will see that across Tempe, other than many of these alternative schools, graduation rates are quite high, and a number of schools are doing a great job moving students on to college.
Do you want to talk about some of those? The other three graphs, the graph on the right is chronic absenteeism, what percent of students are absent 15 or more days during the year. And those, you can see you have some outliers, some with more than 20, 40, even almost 70% of the students are reported by the school to be chronically absent, to miss that many days. The lower right one is suspension rates. Students who are suspended a lot are much more likely not to graduate. And so you see the suspension rates of different schools here. The one on the far right, I won't name, but each of the schools in that charter chain seemed to say 100% of their students were suspended during the year.
That would be a bad out.
I don't think that's probably correct, but that's what they reported. And then the far left side is achievement. So we looked at Arizona, AZ Merit, and looked at the percent proficient on 11th grade English. And you can see on the top left, it's, the y-axis is graduation rate, the x-axis is percent proficient, and you can see a couple of schools up there on, in Tempe, who have less than 20% proficient on the AZ Merit, but have pretty high graduation rates. So that raises the question of how well-prepared are students? But you have a number of schools in Tempe that have high proficiency rates. And some of the educators said, hey, but that's AZ Merit, kids don't care about it. What about something like ACT? So we did a study of the districts that gave every student an ACT and looked at the ACT scores versus the AZ Merit scores, and the correlation between college-accur ready on the ACT and AZ Merit was .92. Essentially, if you're proficient on AZ Merit, you're proficient as far as ACT is concerned.
So we have a couple, then, questions that this data raises. Of primary importance, we think, is, well, what, first of all, what can we do to change these outcomes? And if we improve these outcomes, what kind of effect would that have? So we've been able to calculate, here in Tempe, we increased college-going by simply 10%. Every year, 300 more kids would go on to college. As a result, for each of those 300 kid cohorts, you'd see a $94 million increase in lifetime earnings, with $31 million of increased funding to state and local government. It would be a pretty significant impact for an additional 300 kids moving on to college.
And that doesn't mean they're all going to get a degree. We use the state's percentage of students who go on and get some college, who get an AA, a BA, or a higher degree, to estimate that, and that was based on Arizona data.
So this, this data is not drawn on national estimates of what a degree would mean. It's actually drawn on, here in Arizona, what have people been able to earn as a result of higher degree attainment? And so the last thing I note, you know, we are not an advocacy shop. Our goal from the very beginning has been to be a resource for data and evidence-driven decision-making. And again, we're more than happy to have you over and really dig into this data. But what we do want to make sure that we raise are the fact that there are many different options for cities, for school districts, for decision-makers at every level to have a positive impact on all of these factors that we've mentioned, from chronic absenteeism to suspension rate to increase in the high school graduation rate. There are a number of interventions, and we've just flagged those that were included in the evidence-based clearinghouse at the National Department of Education as interventions with a high degree of, with strong evidence and a high degree of replicability, as options for cities, for policymakers, for educational systems to consider, to have a positive impact on these factors that have meaningful influence on college-going and high school graduation rate. So we wanted to provide you with that quick survey overview, but also just wanted you to know we are a resource here to serve.
This is really good information. So thank you to Marie, and obviously, thank you to Rachel, Luke, and Joe for your information. I, I'm a big fan of Decision Theater and what you guys do. I actually had an opportunity to take some of my fellow mayors from other cities to look at the budgeting model we did for the state of Arizona when we were in DC for some meetings, and they were blown away. It's really truly a model, how cities can use the data and information technology to be more efficient in their own communities. And I see this happening with our partners in elementary and high school districts and our school districts in the state, or in the city of Tempe, and how we can share this information. I'm hoping we share that information with them. We have some, some members here from our school districts. I think it'd be, it's very valuable. And I think we see, just the last slide, in terms of what, if we could increase the graduation rate a little bit more to 90%, 430 more students would get a diploma, which would increase the lifetime earnings overall. I think that's, that's a big, that's one of the reasons why we haven't achieved 65. Okay, you said 60, we want to, you know, this is the competitive edge of the city of Tempe. We're small, but we're mighty. So, and we act a lot bigger than we are, but at the same time, this is some tremendous information. So thank to, to all of you for giving us this information, this valuable data that we could share with our partners in our community. Joel, then Councilman Keating, then Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, no, I just want to say thank you for the information and the data. I mean, this is awesome, and I'm glad that this city is, is trying to achieve high goals, certainly more than the state. Question, does, when we talk about getting to graduate, what, are we even considering trade schools as part of that outcome? And I think that's a big plus for us, too, with EBIT and, and some of those things, because I see that even shortage in that industry with electricians and plumbers and things like that, which is, and high-paying jobs that can come from that, I think that's very crucial in this economy also. The other thing is, I know we talked about, it was intriguing about the adults trying to achieve, I'm a creditor too, away from, from getting that, and, and I know that I often think, I want to get my master's, but when am I going to do it? So I don't know what incentives of working through that, you know, either through the work or whatnot, or the jobs paying for tuition, things like that, pre-reimbursement. I know those offers are such a big value. And then, you know, we talk about our schools, I'm so proud of the pre-K programs that we have, you know, within the city. This says a lot. As we talk about all the stats you guys bring up with economic development and business and, and opportunities, we see an opportunity within our industry or with the business that we bring in with our city, that their investments back into the education, like pre-K or things like that, is of value for their families and is of value for other families that are going to come in here. I think that just kind of says a lot for Tempe trying to keep in the resources within Tempe, hopefully. And, and a couple of that, I know that Mom being an educator for a number of years and me, I did some teaching, student teaching, but even going to visit classes and even families, even on, on certain sides of our school districts, there's some, there's some challenges, challenges at home, and, and it's, how do you connect with those challenges? I think, you know, we have an opportunity, hopefully with increased teacher pay, with increase of, of trying to get people more involved and trying to help out. I know that teachers have a big value on touching kids to get them motivated possibly to even go into college. So it was, I know there was a combination of a lot of things. I appreciate what you guys are trying to do. Hopefully, we can get there with a combination of these things and move forward.
Councilman Keating?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all very much for this update. You know, I wasn't here when we adopted the Achieve 65 goal, but I'm very proud of the city for having done so, and I would have happily supported it had I been here, because you know, Tempe is a city that has long valued education. In fact, we've never, as I'm sure you know, have failed to pass an override to further fund our schools when the state refuses to. And, you know, Tempe, as you also know, has, has a nationally-recognized pre-K program, and it has a world-class university. And I think there's few cities the size of Tempe that can say that they have both. So Tempe has long had a, had a cradle-to-career culture of education, and I'm very pleased to not only live in the city and be a part of that, that process, but I'm very happy with, you know, our teachers and our school administrators and our school board members who make that possible and, and help us get closer and closer to that goal. So you guys are obviously on a very positive trajectory. I don't think it's going to be a problem for us to get there by 2030, so thank you for the work that you're doing, not only in the city of Tempe, but statewide, and of course, our staff, too, who quarterback's the whole thing. Thanks.
Vice Mayor Kiwi?
So I'm grateful for the partnership with ASU. I'm very well familiar with the Decision Theater and Decision Center for Desert City, which is one of my pet baby projects. And Rachel, your contributions to Achieve 65, we really see the interconnectedness of pre-K and disability resources and cradle to, sort of cradle-to-grave education, and it's all so interconnected, and we need to establish those connections as a community. And it's, and some people say that cities have no role to play in education, and obviously, this council begs to differ, but thank you for your leadership in the community going forward as well. I do want to ask, and this, this echoes something that Councilmember Navarro said. I got a Facebook comment, and it was a good question. And obviously, by saying that the goal of 65, you're allowing that there'll be people that will go in the trades, or that for some people, the college debt isn't worth it, and there's other opportunities out there that might be more lucrative or more, more compelling. But I just want to read, I just want to give voice to the, to the resident who said, what, I didn't realize this is something Tempe was pushing. What does Tempe have in place to push the trades? It seems to me, with all the construction going on, not only could you push the trades, but give incentives to those construction general contractors to hire people who live in Tempe to work those construction jobs. College and student debt is not always the answer or the only path to success. So I just wanted to ask, within the programs that we do, have we thought about doing any programs that would sort of offer information about apprenticeships for some of the specialized building trades?
I'll speak a little more broadly since, since I don't spend all day sitting with Marie, although that would be a really fun job. But I can speak broadly about Arizona, and so a couple of things I would say. One thing that we have really been bullish about at Achieve 60 is that the, sort of when those questions come to us, we put it back to the employer and say, okay, so what are you doing? You have, there's a federal tuition reimbursement program. Are you encouraging that with your employees? Are you looking at all of your resources to ensure that if an employee starts with you as an hourly laborer, are you helping them find the way, the pathway to become a project manager and be part of these massive projects? So there's some, you know, in general, pushback to say, these trades are important, but you have a role to play. Similarly, though, I would also say, from the big statewide level, we see a lot of growth in the career technical education programs, ensuring that young students can find their way to explore career in the safety of a high school environment. There's a lot of push to see how we can get more and more registered apprenticeships in that sort of fold. There are a lot more work than I think people take credit, like, understand at the beginning, so they're going to be slower to do because a federally-registered apprenticeship takes a long, long time to figure out. But it is absolutely part of the goal and something that we see as a viable path for many young people. And then I would lastly just say, and this is specific, right? So I know that when Career Ready Tempe was being explored, and in that conversation, I was not there, but I have gotten the, the sort of upload, you know, it was looking at what sectors in, in Tempe are growing and have a need for this sort of long-term pathway that you can start in high school, but you could see yourself there through community college, through universities, have that long trajectory. I know they started at financial services because that was sort of the first person who, you know, took a bite at the apple, but I, I think it is generally true across Arizona, construction is one of our largest sectors, and I would imagine that that is on the docket for further conversation, hopefully as that program grows, because that would be a phenomenal model for lots of kids. So that's my big Achieve 60 answer, but more locally.
Yeah, and, and as Rachel said, is particularly with Career Ready Tempe, really working closely with career and technical education at the high school. And as we move into our second year of this two-year pilot program, thanks to the city's innovation funds, you know, we're really looking at other sectors as well, and, and hopefully, and the trades are definitely part of those sectors that we're looking at, and, and connecting students in those career and technical education classes with, with, with those sectors.
And to that point, Marie, when you talked about the Career Ready Tempe and also the College Connect, those are programs that, we use innovative funds from our own budget, but that really helps individuals achieve some of the goals that we're trying to achieve. Yesterday, we had a program for lights-on after-school with our Kids Zone program. We have one of, you know, I'm going to brag a little bit, we have one of the best after-school programs in a state with our Kids Zone program, and we have great staff, and having an environment for them to still do homework, STEM, and research, and still have activity and fun games helps with the mind of the young kids that we have in our community. And I think that was tremendous input from the city, having those programs available that we could build upon to help achieve what we have. So thank you for that. Councilmember Edana Savage?
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Mark. I mean, I'm not going to say a lot of the things that everybody else said, because I got to tell you, I think Rachel said it best, is, you know, I couldn't be prouder to be living in this city and to be a leader in this city, because we are so innovative in so many different ways. And, and one of the things that, for many of us that spend some time nationally and work with other cities all across the country, is that we can all be really proud of, is the partnerships. I can't tell you how often I am able to talk to colleagues across the country and brag about really great partners that we have in this community, and we wouldn't be who we are without those great partnerships. So I'm, I'm really grateful for the education leaders that are here. Thank you so much for what you do, for those that are in the classroom, the staff, the administration, ASU in our backyard. I mean, and, and Rachel, you, you know, you really said it best in really bringing everybody together to, to get to Achieve 65. I thought it was funny when you said, oh, yeah, Achieve 65, it's not a big deal. I'm pretty sure that's not what Marie said when we said, oh, yeah, let's do 65, that's going to be great. But to me, I think that's the Tempe way, and that's who we are. So I, I, I think that what we're talking about and some of the things that the mayor mentioned is, it's all like, kind of, there's so much energy and synergy that is really happening with everything that we do, and, and there is, there is a couple of things that I think that we can always improve upon. I see that there's a couple of gaps. And having this tool, to me, is just a really great way to be able to drill down, because we talk about, you know, spreading the peanut butter, and sometimes that's not really the most effective method, but to really make a true difference, you really got to pinpoint and focus on some certain areas. And one of the things I know that we've done recently, and thanks to Chris Bush and, and her team, is really talk to middle schoolers, you know, get them thinking a little bit about what happens after high school and, and think about that transition into high school. So, and the correlation that you said from AZ Merit to ACT, that's, that's unbelievable. So, I mean, to be able to have that data, and then I think to find out those individuals that maybe have dropped out of college for some reason. But the things that we talk about, we care about, really revolves around education. I mean, that is the heartbeat of Tempe. We talk about affordability. Well, you know, you can't really pay a mortgage unless you have a good, solid-paying job. I mean, that's, it's really important. So our workforce is, is very important. I do feel like we have a role when it comes to education. I mean, we're, we're, we can't do everything by ourselves, and I'm really happy and, and very proud to be a, a part of this initiative. And just want to say thank you to everybody, to, to our staff, and, and to all of our partners. Thank you for what you do.
Anybody else? Councilman Navarro?
Yeah, yeah, just want to recognize, Maria, I remember the conversation me and Robin had way back when, years ago, when we were doing our, our committees, and we were in committees, and we're like, we can't possibly do this as councilmembers, the connection and being part of the schools and being that interactive. And we were like, we need a position there. And Maria, she was, she was the one that was chosen, and it's been such a hands-down benefit with the connection that, from our office to everyone else's office within the educational community, to have that partnership. And now she even has more people with her. But I just have to say, it's, it's tremendous that, you know, looking into what we did and how important it is for education. And the one other thing I wanted to add was, and, and that's what I was probably reflecting on, was, and just seeing faces, was career days within schools, and, and we had an opportunity to do that. And, and those were great opportunities, because the kids actually saw people and, and listened to people of their struggles and what they went through, or not struggles, or just their course of life, and where they're at and, and the positions they hold. I thought that was a value for a lot of kids within schools, and I think those are tremendous ways to go about.
All right. Joe?
I just wanted to react to a couple of council members, I mentioned, pre-K. And I want to, with my professors had on, commend Tempe and the city council in particular for your investments in pre-K. This is some of the strongest evidence base you can possibly find on human capital development, and also some of the highest possible return on investment. So I think Tempe is really a model in many ways for the choices that you've made.
Well, again, Rachel, Marie, Luke, and Joe, thank you guys so much. And please, don't be strange, we want you to continue to work with us and, and give us the data and the information that we could share with our partners. And it's something that's really unique about Tempe is the partnership, so.
We will do that, and partnership with your city leadership and staff as well.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. That was great information. We got more information that's really excellent as well. The next item on our agenda is the 2019 Community and Business Survey Results. And, always good.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Rose and Chastity Director of Strategic Management and Diversity.
And is he Chris here?
Yes. Yes. And to my right, Chris Taylor, CEO and President of ETC Institute, who has been conducting our survey, community survey since 2007, and our business survey since 2017. And he's here to share some information with you.
Mayor, members of the council, it's great to be back. I've actually now been doing surveys for the city of Tempe since 1998. So you have been coming here a long time. So for those of you who aren't familiar with our firm, we're the national leader in doing work for local governments. In fact, Valley Metro, for example, just did a big onboard survey last spring. That was us and transportation. We do work in pretty much every area that local governments provide services. What I'm going to do is share you the results of this year's community survey first, and then I'm going to walk you through the results of our resident survey. And you've been doing the survey now more or less since 2007, pretty much a similar set of questions with a similar set of methodology. So you can really have a key performance indicator that objectively assesses how you're doing as you make changes in services or your budgets, you can kind of decide did that really make a difference. And so I'm going to walk you through this year's results. The overall survey was done in a similar fashion to the way we've done it in previous years. We selected random samples of households. It's actually a stratified random sample to make sure each of your eight character areas have a statistically valid sample. So we make sure we get at least 100 surveys from each character area. We then take a look at the composition of the sample to make sure that we have all your race, racial groups, Hispanics, African Americans, similar to the census. And then I know the age has been a little bit of concern for a couple of people. And I just want to let you know that half of the city's population of adults between 18 and 35 are basically in that age group. And so when we first started doing the survey a long time ago to make sure you had good data for people in different age groups, we set it up so we'd get about an equal portion between 18 and 34, same portion between 35 and 44, 45, and I won't go, but there's five age groups. And that way, each year, your distribution by age is very comparable. So if we see changes from one year to the next, it's really a change in perceptions of the community. The data is then broken down by age so that we can actually see the differences for the age groups. I've worked with more than three dozen large university cities in the country and it's the best way to do a consistent performance measurement over time because of the fluctuations in the city's population. For example, we did the survey in July and August when school would not have had the same number of students here. So I know that was a concern, I know you're short on time, but I'd be happy to address that in more detail a little later. The bottom line is I can confidently tell you, these results are on target, they're very comparable to the previous years. And the good news is you continue to set the standard for performance for all communities across the country. You are among the elite providers of city services. Here's just a map that shows the location of where the respondents are from, and this is the bottom line. I used to be military, so I started doing this a long time ago. First thing is you continue to set the standard for the delivery of city services. Overall satisfaction in Tempe is 35% above the national average. And this isn't a selection of cities that we have in our database. We do a national survey of over 4,000 U.S. residents every year and your rating is 35% above that. You ranked above our indicators in 39 of 43 key areas. And what I'm really happy to share with you of some of the things you've had challenges with in the past, your refuse trash issues, fire issues, code issues. I come back, you fix it. I come back, you fix it. You're now the best rated fire department in all of our databases. And I'll roll that out more specifically a little later. There's a lot of good news here. Of 106 items, which is a lot of things assessed, most didn't change a lot, but 26 were statistically different as far as you look at the significance. Of those 23 improved, just three decreased. All three decreases had to do with your street-related condition issues, and I'll show that to you in a little bit, which is one of the reasons that's identified as a top priority. Neighborhoods, traffic delays, and economic and business development kind of round out the top issues. So, how did we get there? Well, first, overall satisfaction with city services is very high. I'm going to show you a lot of charts that look like this and for time purposes, I'm going to go through them pretty quickly and just highlight some of the findings. But I do want to highlight that the overall satisfaction with city services, as you can see in this chart, at 83%. And you can see how few, just 4% of folks are giving negative ratings. So for every person who complains to you, which you will hear, that's part of the open, you know, hearing process, there's 20-some people out there that feel like you're doing a really good job.
I know.
So just kind of keep that in mind.
Say that again.
On your customer service, if you come down a little ways, you'll see 72% giving positive ratings, just 9% negative. Again, the ratio, even for yourselves, you may feel like you're attacked and people don't think you're doing a good job. Elected officials, only 19%, which is very low for communities like this. And you can see out of six out of 10, so it's a three-to-one ratio of folks feel like you're doing a really good job. And you even see participation in city decision-making process and you're like, "Oh no, we're doing terrible at 46%. The average is 31%." So putting this into context, you are clearly the city that other cities want to be like. Again, when you go through, I won't read everything to you, the quality of life, whether it's the image or public libraries, many of these things rate near the top. And so I'm going to go through these fairly quickly. I do want to highlight though, look at one of the things that the highest rated services now, residential recycling services. And above that, residential trash collection services. You may recall when I was here about eight years ago, there were some issues with trash collection services. You saw the numbers drop over 20%. They rebounded now to the previous levels and are even better than they were before. You'll see your bulk trash pickup is doing great, your neighborhood parks, even though there's a little dissatisfaction, all of these areas rate very, very well across the board with your parks and recreation issues. And continuing on, even when it comes to some of the issues related to services with persons with disabilities. And really, I won't read all of this, you can just see, I make the main point, maybe it's just lots of blue and not a lot of negativity. The issues that we do see some concerns are, are in this chart where we have the fourth page of the services that were rated. You'll see the alley issue continues to be there, that's not one that's gone away, but it also hasn't been the top priority. So in some ways, at the end of the day, you've been a good, done a great job prioritizing the issues you've taken on. You'll see the condition of streets though has 30%. And I'm going to show you in a little bit, the condition of streets have dropped 20 percentage points over the last 12 years. And so that's one of the things I'm highlighting for you to look at in a little more detail. You'll notice here as well, as far as growth and development issues, conditions of major city streets and sidewalks is the only item that has more than 20% folks giving negative ratings. Your local transit service is one of the best rated transit systems in the country. You can see only 9% of folks give negative ratings. Doing a great job in your walking and biking paths. And of course, you can see now your recycling services is at the top of the list of items that are on this chart. And as you continue on, you'll notice that again, areas of concern where we have more than 20% giving negative ratings, the conditions of streets, some concerns about planning for growth. Your internet service provider, you're like the only city I asked that question in, but it continues to struggle. And then you can see management of traffic flow is also an issue. Interestingly, your management of traffic flow compared to other communities of your size is actually better. So even though you see a lot of concerns, it's not an abnormal concern for a city of your size. And it's typically the number one concern in communities where people want to be. In other words, if you're in a community where a lot of people want to go there, traffic flow is likely to be the issue. If you're a community that nobody wants to be and it's a dying community, traffic flow usually isn't a concern. As far as the trends, these are just terrific. Not a lot of changes and we don't expect lots and lots of changes in any given year. But of the 26 that did change, 23 actually improved significantly, just three went down significantly. And you can see those are the next couple of charts. As far as the overall greatest areas of improvement since 2007, your walking and biking paths, that was a big priority back in the early surveys. It's up 16%. Your transit system was a big priority back in those days, it's up 14%. Safety, I remember, was the number one issue the first time I did the survey, it's up 12%. And you've done a great job keeping folks informed with information, that's up 10% since 2007. As far as short-term, I just have to highlight local fire services and your emergency medical services. They're now both number one in our database for like cities. And we're talking about dozens and dozens of cities. And you might recall, I was here a few years ago showing you that your fire rated below the national average. So you've gone from being below average to now setting the standard. So congratulations for that. Code enforcement as well was an area of concern in previous surveys. You now have seen that increase 9% compared to last year. Medical rescue services, much like fire, went up 9%. And then even the perceptions of safety, that was an area last year that we talked about, was something for you to be focused on. And you can see there were double-digit increases in several areas there. So congratulations for really listening to what residents' priorities and concerns have been and making a difference. On the other side of the house, this is where we're seeing the decreases. Since 2007, satisfaction with the condition of streets and neighborhoods has dropped 20%. You've gone from being one of the highest rated cities in that area to now being below average. Condition of major streets and sidewalks is down 15%. Landscape maintenance along streets is down 9% and your larger parks is down 7%. Your larger parks could be a function too of people have gotten kind of used to them because I was here back before you did the big lake and everything. That's when I did my first survey and then you got some of the greatest ratings I'd seen for your regional parks. The concerns are, is that in the last year, condition of city streets has dropped 7% from a year ago and your major streets is down 7% and even neighborhood streets is down 5%. So that's the thing, it's not just a one year, this has been a gradual decrease over the last decade or so. With that kind of negative news, or at least insights, let's talk about some of the great things. Here's a list of where you are setting the standard or frankly, significantly above the standard. There are 43 areas we assess in the survey. You rate above the average in 39 of those 43. Of the four that you were below the national average, you were only below your regional average in one area. In fact, in other words, when we looked at comparable cities, you were actually above your comparable partners. So really, there was just one item where you rated below in both. Highlights on here, a few things. At the top, availability of information. You are doing a great job keeping folks informed, 36% above the national average. You can see, I already mentioned, the overall quality of city services at 35%. Your transit system, you can see is towering above the others. And as you work your way down, you'll see leadership of elected officials on this list. Value for tax dollars, you can see is double digits above the national average. And even the things like avail, you're getting people to be able to participate in decision-making, though it was an area that had more negativity, you're actually doing it much, much better than the average community. In addition, you'll remember trash collection, the issues, you had a few. You're now 14 points above the national average in that regard. Recycling is 13 points above the national average. And I won't read everything on here, but I want to do, want to highlight local fire services. You'll notice is 11%. You've gone from being below average to now being quite above the average in that arena. So congratulations on those things. As far as looking forward, we did ask residents what they thought the top priorities for different services were. Overall, police services was at the top of the list, neighborhoods was next, condition of streets was third, social and human services was fourth, and traffic delays was fifth. What was interesting, because I know there are some concerns based on the age issue that were raised, I looked at the data more carefully. And neighborhoods across the board was pretty much in the first, second, or third for every age group. Police services was number one or two for every age group except people under 35. It was actually 11th for that group. But when you looked at conditions of city streets, that tended to be a higher priority for people over 35, but social services and traffic delays were a bigger deal for folks under 35 as well as parks. So I'm going to actually help you to sort through this so that way you can actually see some of the impact had we done a random sample of the entire city would have looked compared to had we done the stratified random by character area. With that said though, based on the overall results, the number one issue or area that I think you could take a look at, like I've done in the past, whether it's been police one year, or you're recycling some years, or code enforcement, this year it's taking a look at the condition of your streets and sidewalks. It has the highest IS rating. And this takes into consideration the current satisfaction level and the priority. You know, it's not the number one priority, that's police, but the satisfaction rating is 14th out of 15th. And that's the reason it has so much opportunity for improvement. Neighborhoods, traffic delays, economic and business development kind of round out those opportunities to do better. And I continue to highlight social and human services and police services because they're in the mix, they're things that certain segments of the population greatly value. And this is for me because I'm a quantitative person, but for those of you who are visual, this is a separate way to look at the same data. As you go from left to right, the things on the right side are more important than those on the left. From bottom to top, the things on the bottom get lower ratings. And we're looking for things in the bottom right is the areas where people's satisfaction is lower, the priority is higher. And that's where you can see the condition of streets, traffic delays, neighborhoods, social services, and then police services gets flagged as an area for continued improvement. So in summary, congratulations once again. The city has sustained its rating. In fact, your overall rating is actually up a percentage from where it was a year or two ago. So great job in that regard. You are the city that other cities that we work with are constantly looking forward to how to improve. And what you do better than probably almost any other city where we work is, it seems like there's a different issue. I come out here every time and then you fix it. So a lot of cities have the same issue every year I come and they can't seem to figure it out. You seem to have, I look over the issues, you've had four or five different issues over the last 12 years and you fixed them. So that's why I have a lot of confidence that whatever you do over the next few years, it'll be done in the best interest of your residents. Streets is at the top of that list. How you address that, I don't know, but there are lots, it's certainly a concern for folks in continuing to emphasize your neighborhood, traffic issues, and business development. So with that said, that's all of the resident piece. I have a short business one as well, Mayor. You'd like to see that, but I don't know if we want to pause for questions on this first.
Before we do that, let's have some comments on the residential one. And Chris, I want to thank you for another great presentation and thank you to our staff for moving this up in the process because we asked last year, by moving this up, this information up in the process before our budget, as you can see, we listened to the survey and we listened to our residents to where we know we have some room for improvement. And you've seen the results. We see that. That's the fact that, I can't stress the fact that our residents said that we're 35% above the national average. I think it's a 2% increase over last year because last year I think we were 33 and now we're 35. And the information that we're getting out to our residents about our city continues to improve, as you mentioned. But what's really important is we can use, all the areas that we have slated for improvement, we're already looking, investing, and taking action into those items in our last budget, but also as we're going to move forward with the new information in terms of, I know we can use the data that you have to help us with the public feedback on our urban core, we're planning for traffic in the urban area, probably the most densest part of our city. And our population is going to double by 2040. So we're taking all that in consideration as we move forward as a city and really shows how we listen to our residents. I can't stress that enough. And I think we're not surprised by some of the top three priorities, some of the areas that we need to improve on. So thank you so much for that. And I know that as this really shows, and I know the item after this is our start tool that we're going to talk about, how important that is for our budgeting process. So, Councilmember Edano Savage?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Chris, thank you so very much. 1998, which I think to me is pretty awesome in itself, but just shows how much knowledge and information you have, not only with the city of Tempe, but all the other cities and kind of can help us see where we fall short and where we're doing extremely well. So that matters a lot to me and I know to our residents, so thank you for that. I do have one question. If we talk about the areas of, the areas of greatest decline, I'm just wondering, because the conditions of the streets and the neighborhoods are the ones that we've continually seen in there, continually decline, and what has been your experience? At what point do we kind of get concerned that we're not turning that around? I mean, when will it, or will it even impact the perception that maybe the rest of our residents may have on the city as a whole because we're not making change on something that's important to them?
This is the time I brought it up. I've been watching it for a few years, but when you, when you're the city that's setting the standard in every area and then you fall below in an area, that's the time. It's not going to have cataclysmic consequences now, but if it were to continue to erode and you suddenly get to 20% or 15% satisfaction, that's a very, very difficult point to turn it around from. So right now, I think it's still very manageable. You're on par when you look at your condition of your streets to other communities, your average, but that's why I think it's such a big issue for you is because you're just average. Exactly, you're
Well, actually golf, I'd be thrilled if I was far.
Yeah, so you're, so it's not a, it's not a crisis for you and even the IS rating itself is just point one-two, which is barely a measurement of concern from my perspective. I was in another city two days ago and their rating for streets was point seven-three. So that's a very different situation to me and than you are.
I know it's hard to turn the corner in streets just because it's a very expensive thing to put our resources on, so
You have other conditions because of that.
Right, well, it was one of the things, I'm just going to say, we didn't accelerate even though I only wanted to, but that's okay. So I have one more thing I wanted to bring up and just say thank you for that, I really do appreciate it. I just want to make sure that those don't start impacting the overall perception of Tempe and if it does, when that starts happening. I just want to give a shout out to, if you go back to the areas of greatest improvement, to those areas, those departments, those staff members, that obviously have really worked hard because that doesn't just happen. That happens with effort, attention, I mean dedication, and I just want to say thank you to all those people that have been involved in, in making that change. I mean, and now to see our fire services number one, I mean, that's, that's pretty, pretty great. And if you see how many other cities Chris works with, just think how many times he's mentioning that to, he's saying Tempe Fire to all these other cities around the country. So keep saying that and all the other great work that's, that's happening. I just want to say thank you to our staff, to the leaders for what you guys do every single day because it really shows that you care and I know this community appreciates it. So thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Adams, then Councilmember Keating.
Yes, thank you for doing such a great survey, very informative. I also want to give the fire credit, Chief, back there in the corner, I see you. Congratulations on such a great survey for the fire. As far as streets goes, we were discussing streets at our, when we were working on the budget and I know I asked for six million dollars for street improvements and we did, we were able to get three million, so perhaps in the next budget year, we can get even more for improving our streets and, and in our neighborhoods too. I get a lot of feedback from the neighbors that they really would like to see improved streets throughout the city. I'm very pleased with the trash, trash and recycling improvements and I especially want to thank Rosa and Chowste for turning the department around in a positive direction and it really shows when employees are treated well, what a great job they'll do for us. So thank you for that. I am, the maintenance of the private property went way up and I want to thank Jeff and code enforcement. Code enforcement, that's such a difficult job and they really went out there, they looked at what the survey was last year and they used it for a map and really resolved a lot of those issues. And I for one have gotten a less, a lot less complaints about code enforcement issues as a result in the last six months, so thank you to Jeff and his crew. And I like the, finally, I really like the increase in the resident participation and those of you who've come to these meetings every single Thursday know that I'm constantly asking if the residents were included in the decision-making process and obviously they really appreciate that. So thanks to all the staff and departments that are really reaching out to the residents and including them in the, in the decision-making process. And that's all I have.
Councilmember Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much for another year, another survey. Thank you, Rosa, for bringing this to us. I would ask, can we get this deck sent to us so we can share it with the public? Great. This is always my favorite, you know, work-study session presentation of the year because, you know, in this job, you only hear from the people who are mad at you and, you know, the way they talk sometimes, it sounds like we're being run like Johannesburg or something. So it's great to see that, you know, the vast majority, you know, eighty-three percent of Tempeans are satisfied with, with the city and the job that's being done by not only our staff, but even surprisingly our elected officials as well. So it's really good to get that positive news and to have the data to back it up, to share and be able to brag on the city in the future about the good work that's being done here in Tempe. Obviously, we have some room for improvement, but if past is any indication, we'll get there in a couple of years after some investment and shuffling around some priorities, but I'm very pleased with, with these results. I'm very pleased to represent Tempe and you guys have done a great job and thanks again. Look forward to next year.
Vice Mayor Keeley, then Councilmember Navarro.
So I had, thank you, Rosa, for leading this effort and thank you for the continued trend analysis. I mean, that's what's important is when we see how from year to year we change in the comparison with other cities. I had a long conversation with Ken Jones today about the survey and I understand that the directions given to, when you look at the respondents, even though it's a, it's a randomized survey that we're choosing to focus on character areas, and that is one way of analyzing the material, but when I was looking at it and spending way too much doing this and learning a lot about Excel functions last night, there
We do the community survey over here.
The respondents do skew older, they do skew, they are less diverse and they represent more single-family than Tempe really is in the census. And so I, I looked at, you know, looked at it through this lens and for instance, I looked at the age, the age demographics in Tempe, fifty-three percent of our residents age eighteen to thirty-four, actually, our median age is twenty-eight point, twenty-eight point eight. So in the sample, it's twenty-one percent. And I get that you're trying to make that uniform across, and that's interesting to know, across all the other city, the city studies that you're doing, but when you look at that, I mean, that's nearly forty percent of what it should be in our sample. So you, I mean, in one analysis, you could say it kind of grossly under-represents that eighteen to thirty-four-year-old demographic and the most overrepresented is the age group fifty-five to sixty-four, which is twenty percent in your sample, but only ten point seven percent in the census. And then I looked at race and ethnicity and the survey respondents are seventy-three percent white, yet the census is sixty-eight point seven, which doesn't sound like a lot, but that can translate into pretty big variations. And then African-Americans, six point five in the census, four, four percent in our, our survey. Native Americans, one percent in our survey and two point four percent. So you could say they're underrepresented in the sample. And then looking at homeowners versus residents, eighty-one percent of the respondents live in single-family homes, but the twenty-seven census list, fifty-one point seven percent of Tempe housing is single-family. Sixty-eight percent of the respondents own their own residence, but within the census, forty-five percent are owner-occupied. So in a way, you could say homeowners are overrepresented in the sample. And I realize that's the instruction you're given, you were told, look at character area, but I wonder if we applied a different standard and we looked at the census demographics and we looked at a slice of what Tempe, of what Tempe is, if we would get different results?
Yeah, you would, and actually, what you just read to me, I know all those statistics. I know the city probably better than just about anybody. I've surveyed for a long time. The real issue is, is you have to decide is you want a strategic measurement that you can do reliable year after year, year-round. During certain periods, the students just aren't here and they account for about forty thousand of your residents. Ten thousand of them live in group housing or your dorms and fraternity that you just can't survey. So you have the choice, you can either oversample that population or you can make sure when you design the survey that they're represented in a statistically valid number and the twenty percent that we do have is a very significant sample, represents almost two hundred people between the ages of eighteen and thirty-four. So what we do is I actually then take a look at the five age categories, even though they're different, and I look and see are there differences in the way they rate. So for example, young people eighteen to thirty-four place a much greater priority on parks than folks who are over thirty-five. Folks over thirty-five place a much greater priority on police. It's good and important that the council knows that, so as you're making decisions, you can say, we want to make the best decisions for all residents. So I certainly under no situation would ever want to hide the information, which is why we create cross tabs for the city every year and I actually go through the data. And so ultimately, the real key, what I love about your pursuit is it will cause people to dive more deeply in the data and I believe so strongly in the data that when you look at it, you'll make even better decisions because if we don't look at it for the age groups, there will be needs that get overlooked. In the same way, let's say that we didn't look at what the folks who are over sixty-five thought because they only account for nine point eight percent of the city's population according to the census. Well, if we only did eight hundred surveys and we had ten percent, now we only have eighty respondents instead of a hundred and fifty. Now our ability to make different decisions for your seniors.
Yeah, it's not so much selecting those people to be interviewed, but once you have that number, you can skew it and wait it.
So I guess to get to your point is, this data is great and I can follow my career for that, but the real issue is to make sure that you probe into it for the levels that are important. So if you want to see what young people, and you know they account for a large portion, then that's something we can do. I can literally recreate those priorities for you in seconds and say, here's what it would be if it were weighted. So that's why, I don't want you to have any lack of confidence.
I would love to see those rates myself, I don't know about the rest of the council, but I know that sometimes there's this tendency, in a city, in a college town, you tend to discount sometimes the students, like other students, they come and go, they're transitional, but they also, the census counts them here and that's how we have our resources divided up by the federal government.
And I agree, and I actually encourage our communities where that's a big deal to oversample those populations. If you want to make sure there's more student populations, you could do a greater effort if that was a priority, but ultimately, you have to take years of the resources we have and would that make a difference in your decisions?
Is it over-sampling or is it correctly?
No, it's over-sampling when a population responds at a lower rate. So for example, if seniors respond at a rate of four to one, I'm going to have to survey four times as many renters or students to get the same number of respondents. So I would have to reach out and do
Yeah, to reach out to more, but it can be weighted to see it reflect.
Right, so those are things that we certainly could do. So I don't want to suggest for one minute that that couldn't be done, but right now, the way the survey is designed is for the long-term measurements particularly focused on the character
Yeah, and not to discount, I mean, it's definitely a valuable tool and it can give us interesting information, but I'm always one that will look at, at the nuance of it and see that there are, there are areas that
No, and I think that's a great
It's important to look at those distinctions, like view parks you mentioned, that are more important to younger people. So thank you for that and I would like to see a weighting with the age distribution and see what
I could probably create that same matrix where you saw the top priorities, if you'd like it, so that would actually
Love to see that, but I don't know if I can direct him to do that, is that okay? The rest, and I'm not
I'll volunteer, Mayor, to provide that if people would like to see that.
Okay.
But I'm sorry, wasn't
Wait, Councilmember Navarro?
I just wanted to comment on that because I, I guess my, I don't feel the same way. I mean, I feel a little bit differently than that. I definitely appreciate you, I think in your experience and your professionalism in this, I mean, you've always been really great and standard and I know you tell it like it is, so I can always appreciate that. But my thought is, is I just, I don't want to value or weight one age or one area over another, so I, I don't want to see that. I, I don't think that that will be valuable to what we're doing here. I think that this has been really consistent and helpful for us and it is extremely valuable to our budget process. So I just want to say thank you, you know, for the expertise that you bring to this. So that's just my two cents.
So I wasn't finished. And I just think whenever you have more, more nuanced data and more information, it's always good. I mean, you don't have to read it if you don't want to, Councilmember Arda Savage, but to me, that gives us a key into the community and sometimes we, we hear, you know, people and even our neighbors vilify students as somehow not counting. Well, this is a generation that's going to feel the impact of our decisions more than any of us. I won't be alive when we feel the impact of our, of a lot of decisions we're making today. So, you know, I think it is important to look at it weighted by US Census, weighted accurately and according to demographics. And so I'll conclude with that, but I did want to say that one of the, there weren't that many areas that had twenty-five percent dissatisfaction, but the finance and lobbyist disclosure was listed as one of the areas, one of the main areas and that was a question. Sorry, my screen went blank, but it was the, it was the strong, most strong, strongly dissatisfied ease of access issue in the city. Like city council was pretty high, but, but on finance and lobbyist disclosure was pretty low at twenty-five percent. So I'm going to introduce an agenda item based on that, I think, later, but just wanted to note that.
Councilmember Navarro?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, thank you, like everyone else, I mean, you just do a great job. I love the fact that we're a data-driven city and we're just improving and improving. Rosa, thank you. I mean, the staff and everybody, I mean, the, the things and decisions we make off the information you give is just so invaluable and so invaluable for our constituents also. It's great information to show, that's why I was like, I got to videotape this and I hope we can get a videotape because I'd love to put it on Facebook. But, and to Councilmember Keeley's point, you know, if we want to break down categories and look at the categories, hey, so be it. I mean, that's, that's fine. I think that in general, we have to look at the whole entire population. I have to say, if ASU is growing like they're doing and, and people are coming here from out of state or even out of the city, and from talking with our relationship with Crow, they're growing exponentially, I think we're doing something right because we're one of the top or most populated universities in the nation, I would probably even throw down the world here very soon, but, so we are doing things right. In the Valley, I just had one question, I mean, how many other cities in the Valley do this process every year?
You are the only one that we do every year. We do about a dozen in the state, probably every other year.
Just in the state, the Valley could be a few.
Yeah, we've done some on and off and it kind of goes with the city councils and the leaders and so as those change, oftentimes, they decide not to do it, so.
Yeah, and, and I get that, I
You get the benefit.
Yeah, I get the benefit and I've seen the other side too. And so it just says volumes to us doing this every year because, just like you said, we make improvements, but it's not only for our citizens, for our business community, for our employees, which is another can that a lot of people probably don't even want to open because you have to face that and, and their staff has to face that. But you know what? The value in that is we have, we try to improve our work conditions within our systems. We try to make things better within our system. So that speaks volumes to what we do. I have to say, kudos to the fire department, to what we're doing within our cities, improving our lighting, I think is one of the benefits that our, I've, I've heard over and over again and you see it and it, and it really does give an area a safer feel just by what we're doing in that category. So I, I think that, you know, staff and everyone else and our departments and, you know, everyone working together, this is just an awesome deal and really appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions, comments? Obviously, more data is good data, so thank you for offering to do that. I know that we use the existing information that you have for us for our start tool, which is our next topic, and I can't stress enough the value of that because you see the results. I mean, if anything, if you recognize the areas of improvement, it was part of our budget process, part of our decision-making process, and we see the areas improve. It's not by accident. And it helps us because obviously, moving forward, we have to have a sustainable economy, have to have a sustainable revenue stream to do the things that our residents expect from us. So in order to do that, we have to make sure that we have all the information we have to make an informed decision. So thank you so much, Chris, I really appreciate, I, we're going to keep having you coming back, so I think that's a good thing. Not because of the great scores that we have, because this really does help us and communicate with our residents that we're listening to them, that's very beneficial to all of us. So thank you so much for that, I really appreciate it. Now I have the business survey.
All right.
Which is almost similar, I think.
Very similar. I was just going to get through, this is the G-Wiz How Great We Are slide, here's the trend. Basically, you did the first survey business back in two thousand seventeen, that gave us a baseline, I did it again this time around, has a lot of the same issues that we have in the resident survey. I'm not going to go into as much detail for this survey, but we did select a random sample of three thousand businesses. Our goal was to get four hundred of them. It's a long survey and it was mainly done by senior managers, owners and of those businesses and altogether, we had four hundred and three actually completed. So we feel good about the data. We haven't finally processed all the open-ended comments, but you can see all sectors of the city's economy were represented pretty much in proportion to what they are, not exactly, but this allows us to kind of look at the data at a little more deeper level, at least for some of the industries. We also looked at it based on how long the business has been in Tempe and part of that is that what do people who've been here for a long time think? What do your new businesses think? So as you have issues and you're making decisions, you can do the same thing to basically see whether or not people who've been around here feel differently than those who've just been here. So with that said, bottom line upfront, satisfaction among businesses is very high. It's eighty-three percent with residents, seventy-seven percent of your businesses give positive ratings. They also think it's a great image and a great quality of life here, eighty-two and eighty-three, and most business owners or managers, people responding to the survey, would recommend Tempe as a business location to others. In fact, it's over ninety percent would at least be somewhat likely to do that, seventy-some percent would be very likely or likely. When we're looking forward, the low crime rate is critical to business desirability to stay here and I'll show that to you in just a little bit. And then top issues, traffic and street maintenance. So very similar to some of the things we saw in the resident survey. As far as the major findings, these are just some of the highlights as to why they originally decided to come to Tempe. And you'll see that the availability of telecommunications, utilities and other infrastructure that's needed was at the top of the list, followed by your low crime rate, access to highways, and interestingly, the attitude of local government toward business was fourth and you can see it rounded out the overall image of the, of the city, we're the top five. So what the city does toward businesses makes a difference, or at least it's a big reason people originally decided to come here. You can kind of ignore the other, there were a handful of people who wrote in open-ended comments and they all thought it was the most important reasons and that's why that says a hundred percent. When we then though asked people why they would stay here and otherwise, why would the business continue to stay in Tempe, what was most important? The low crime rate was clearly the number one issue. So it's a factor coming here, but it's definitely a factor for businesses staying here. You see access to highways, the image, the level of taxation, rounded out again by the attitude of local government toward business. So the way the city is toward business is important and you can see that in the reasons So the way the city is toward business is important, and you can see that in the reasons that they would stay here. As far as the overall perceptions that businesses have, nine out of 10 think the city is a business-friendly community. So that's really healthy. When we looked at whether or not they thought that their employees and customers feel safe, you can see 85% said they felt safe or very safe. Another 13% said somewhat safe and only 2% did not safe. And again, very consistent with the safety ratings from the resident survey. This is the one I like to highlight because it's really kind of the all-encompassing overall question. How would you rate your overall satisfaction with all services provided by the city of Tempe? 77% said they gave positive ratings. And I think it's at 5% or 3%. I'm missing it from back here. But you can see it's so small, very, very few businesses, even fewer than with your residents, give negative ratings. They great, great ratings for safety, new development, public education. You can see there are slightly some negativity with the handling of growth and housing options. But it's a very small percentage, especially in comparison to what you see for the positives. And what I want to highlight on here is the overall value that businesses receive for their city taxes and fees, 61% to just nine. So almost a seven-to-one ratio of businesses feeling good about what they're paying for their taxes and fees compared to those who are dissatisfied. When you look at the physical appearance, generally good ratings from the businesses. 61% say good or excellent. And then you can see 30%, less than 10% indicated it was below average or poor. When they looked at whether or not they would recommend the city of Tempe to others, particularly friends and family, 76% said they'd be likely or very likely. Another 18% said somewhat likely. So over 90% of your businesses would recommend to other people to do business here in Tempe. That's really strong. That's the kind of thing you put out there when you're attracting new businesses to get here. Tax strucker fairness, an 11-to-one ratio of your businesses that think it's fair to not fair. A lot of folks just don't know what it is compared to other Arizona communities. But of those who have an opinion, it's 56% said yes, just 5% said no. And when it looks like how things have changed as far as the overall climate, kind of op, very optimistic. Majority said it's no change. But if you look at those who think it's gotten better versus worse, 35% thought it's gotten better, just 10% getting worse. So all in all, very healthy ratio. This is for the average business. They think things are generally pretty good right now. When it comes to city services, you can see they're off the charts in most areas with regard to public safety. You can also see your utility, trash, economic development generally rated very high. The only two items that had more than neg, more than 20% negative were your streets and then your storm water and flood management. That's you see 29% of businesses gave negative ratings. It was also, you'll see, also rated much higher by some as well. So mixed views on that, depending on where you are and the type of business. When we then actually asked them how it affected their operations, is how they operate their business, you can see again, pretty much high ratings in all areas. The two areas that kind of stand out are the traffic on city streets. You can see it was the lowest rated area. And then street maintenance, including sidewalks, still had 62 positive, but it had 18% negative. So again, not concerned at this point in time, but it was one of the areas that was rated a little bit lower. Hats off to your code enforcement folks because across the board, both on the resident side and the business side, you're getting very good ratings. In fact, there was only one item where you had more than 20% negativity, and that was business sign regulation, which you got to always balance. They'd like to put signs everywhere. But but for every business that complains about sign regulation, you'll notice there's 50%. So it's over a two-and-a-half-to-one ratio. So you might hear folks say, we don't like how the city's doing its business sign regulation. Well, remember, there's two-and-a-half people out there for that one person that feel differently. As far as trends, it was really mixed from the last survey. Some areas got better, some areas got worse. The areas of improvement were very similar to what we saw in the resident survey, particularly with your utility-related services, trash and recycling, utility billing, water and sewer, all went up significantly. Communication also saw increases with the availability of information, the usefulness of the city's website. Even the perception of the availability of workers was up. Your customer service was up as well, along with special events. The areas that we saw the greatest decline were storm water. And you'll also notice street maintenance is on the list, kind of infrastructure-related. There are some concerns, more concerns this time about planning and some of the issues related to economic development. It's interesting that we don't always understand what contributes to that. And sometimes when the economy is doing well and some people aren't, they feel like they're being left out. So we don't know from the survey what the contributing factors are, but that is something that we can take a look at a little bit more to help you with it. As far as the priorities moving forward, economic and business development was the number one priority for businesses. Makes a lot of sense. Maintenance of streets was second, police third, traffic delays fourth, and the appearance of the city rounded out the top five. Not a whole lot different than the residents, but the economic and development definitely was much higher than some of the other services were. When we looked at the analysis, much like we did for the residents, traffic came out to be the top item at 0.15. It was followed by street maintenance and rounded out by police services. And I think you see police services here, not because the ratings are poor, because actually they're very high. You can see satisfactions at 88% satisfaction with police. But it is so incredibly important to folks. You can see 62% picked it as one of their top priorities. And so that's, and again, that's very consistent with the fact that low crime is one of the reasons that they want to stay here. So that's where you continue to invest in something you're doing well because it's so important to folks. And you can see that again, as you go left or right, the two items in the bottom right are the street maintenance and traffic on city streets. And then you can see police is so much more important. It's up in the top right, but emphasizing that to continue making sure that folks, particularly the business community, feel good about that. So in summary, this is just the second survey that we've done. We're actually in the process of developing national benchmarks for business surveys. So by the time you do this, again, if you do in two more years, we'll actually be able to compare your ratings for this survey to national norms like we do for the resident survey. And with, I think that's the wrong summary slide. Somehow that's up there wrong. Bottom line is it should have said what you see right here when we summarize it. Right. This should be the final summary slide. I should go back all the way to the beginning, right here, is that the overall satisfaction's extremely high, but the top priorities at the end of the day, streets and traffic flow, really not much different than what we saw on the resident survey. So again, I don't know if anyone has any questions, but that's the kind of.
We could get the, the, how you had it presented because going through all the hundreds and hundreds of pages we have, that would be helpful. And if we could, Andrew, make sure that our economic development team gets this information because there's some good information that we can use for the materials for economic development as we do presentations and so forth. This kind of backs it up. Councilmember Navarro.
Yeah, once again, thank you. And just real quick, excellent information. When, and I love the fact that we score high in PD Fire and 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 things like that and the appearance of the city, which I think is critically important, too, because that, once again, it's 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 what we invest in our right of ways, right-of-way walls or things of that such. And our bit, our lake, which has been a huge attraction for a number of people. But I just want to say that that we can't let our guards down. I think you said that, too. I think those are one of those things that we got to make sure we stay on top of that, be proactive, stay reactive, especially with our police, you know, making sure that we start to really understand that we need to start possibly hiring as we're growing more and more and more. And with our infrastructure with with public works, you know, obviously, we have a lot of things we're going to have to improve on. The thing that came up was housing on your deal, which was mentioned in there. I don't know if there was a write-in or what, or was a question. But I think that's also an important question that we need to ask our residents. And I don't know if it's specifically stated in our questionnaire, but I think it's one of those things that the council's always been curious about is how is our housing stock? And what do the residents feel about it? Is there a variety out there? Is there not a variety out there? That'd be a good benchmark for us to.
Robin, before we go to Robin, do you know how many of the business recipients live in Tempe?
I don't know if we asked that question. That's something we could ask in the future. We do that for some communities.
That'd be great.
Robin.
Thanks. I mean, I think that's kind of telling, though, too, when you talk about quality of housing options for your workforce. I mean, that's, I think, something that we can always, we've been talking about for a long time in regards to making sure.
Wouldn't appear that it's hurting your businesses because overall satisfaction with the availability of workers actually has gone up since the last survey.
And that makes, yeah, that makes, that makes sense. So I got a question, a question for you, Chris, in regards to the number of of businesses that responded. I see you sent it out to 3,000. You got 400 back, 403. What did we do two years ago?
It was, we had a little bit better resource. This year, we got the same number of surveys, but it was easier to get there. So at the end of the day, we had a, but I think last time we had kind of a larger group engaged. They were helping promote it than we did this time. So we still got to the same number of completed surveys. It just took us a lot more effort to get there.
Well, and I think that's something that we need to make a note of and just making sure that we have the right partners in place. So when we do send out that business survey. And then are you keeping track of the businesses that replied two years ago? Are there, you know, like.
Have that if they provided it.
Oh, okay.
So it's, yeah. So they they gave us their name and contact information. We know who it was. We still select it random, but 3,000 is a high percentage of the businesses here. So it's very likely people got selected.
Were most of them returned via email? I mean, via online, the website?
We, email addresses are difficult to get for businesses unless they're provided by a known agency. So we did purchase some of the emails, but it's, the key is to get to the right person. So in other words.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Get to the partners, I think, that can send it out and and look for it as a tool to help their businesses grow and be better, too, right, within the community. So I mean, maybe that's something that we can think about a little bit sooner when we start two years from now, just to make sure that we do have good partners to help us get that word out. Because I'd love that number to be twice as many. I mean, because I know there was a slide that you still had the 100 per, I don't know if you noticed it.
I'd like to.
100 per, per area. Just saying, that might have to be accurate in this one. But thank you for that. I mean, good things for us to work on for sure.
Rosa.
To thank Ann Gill from the chamber. She did provide resources to Chris to use since we don't have.
Well, they're great partners, so I'm not, I'm not surprised. So that's fantastic.
Very helpful.
Councilmember Adams.
You read my mind about Ann Gill. So I'm glad that you're reaching out to the chamber and and working with them on it. And so has she seen the results yet or is this?
We, we sent both the DTA and the chamber. Ann Gill and Kate Borders have the results. And Gill wanted to be here tonight, but she's a little busy for tomorrow.
Thank you. And I'm glad we're doing these business surveys. I mean, the business community is so important to our our city, and I'm just very happy we're doing it. And also just want to continue to make it easier for small businesses to start up in Tempe.
Thank you. Anybody else? Lauren?
So it's interesting to note that both the Chamber of Commerce, is your business a member of the Chamber? It's about 70%. The same thing with Local First Arizona. I assume we're also sending it to the other, to Local First. Thank you so much. I noticed that the number of businesses, percentage of businesses that knew about our equal pay program is 34%. Do you recall offhand, I don't expect you to know this, but what what it was last year? Have we improved on that score?
Well, I will check that out and get it to Rosa.
Or I could look back last year. But it just seems like an opportunity for us to get the word out about our equal pay program.
Great. Chris, thank you. Thank you very much.
Good to see you.
Wait, before you go, I know Andrew has a comment he'd like to mention.
Just very briefly, I just, thank you, Mr. Mayor. These are results in the continued efforts to report them back to us. Something I wanted to express appreciation on the behalf of the employees of the city of Tempe for your work in gathering this data. There's a lot of really talented people who work every day to provide the city services that are being measured in both the business and the community survey. And a cross-section of them are here tonight in the, in the chambers, but there are so many others who are not here. And I wanted to express my appreciation from my vantage point for what they do. We, we can't do it alone. We are a collective body of of employees who are dedicated, who are talented, who make everything that happens in this city from our organizational standpoint happen with excellence on a daily basis. And I wanted to make sure that I I recognize and express my appreciation from my vantage point for what they do every day and how it's reflected in these surveys. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Rosa. All right. I know before you guys come up, we need to take a five-minute break if we can. Thank you. Thank you.
Hello.
They sing up there all night?
I got it.
They're there all night.
Right. I wait for.
Are we ready?
All right, we're going to go ahead and meet the meeting. Thank you very much for that little quick break. Our next item is our strategic management update and strategy tool for aligning our resources for Tempe, otherwise known as the START process.
Yes.
Mark and Rosa?
Good evening, thank you, Mayor. Rosa and Council Director of Strategic Management and Diversity, and with us.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Mark Day, Municipal Budget Director.
So with this, we have a very short presentation. We always like to follow up after ETC Institute, as we have in the last year. And to the Mayor's point earlier, we have moved up to the community survey and the business survey earlier in the year to commence right after the new fiscal year. That was purposeful, is to get you as much data as possible as you're making budget allocations. So just in line with that, we start with the end of mine. We're all public servants, we're looking at really who are we serving and what are they saying about our city and what they would like us to consider in the budget allocations. So with us tonight, we have Mark, and I are going to present the revised performance measures, just an update. Remove performance measures, propose new ones. We're going to go over the START tool and then the acceleration models. And we have an update on the acceleration models from last year also. So I don't have to go into much detail about all of these. We do have 101 performance measures unless the council would like me to explain any of these, but we have revised performance measures are listed here. Some of them are just basic language changes. Some have decided that the data collection of some benchmarks are too difficult to capture, so they have chosen other things. With the next slide, we have removed performance measures also, and some of them are collapsed into new performance measures. They become strategies under performance measures that we have adopted in the next slide. Proposed performance measures. So in total, as I said, we have 101, and I can take any questions you have about any of the performance measures. If not, we will move forward. So as mentioned, the START tool, and for the public's understanding, the START tool was something that we created three years ago at the direction of the City Manager. We started off on the strategic planning with the city. It really kind of organized the operations of the city much differently in looking at how do we align all of the work, the people that sit right behind me, to the council's priorities. So we set out goals, performance measures, and strategies. We created the START tool, which is a strategic tool basically aligning resources in Tempe. It's a tool that we use where the council allocates $100 to areas and performance measures they would like to see accelerated in the coming budget cycle. Once Chris Haytham, ETC Institute, gave us the findings of the community and the business survey, we went to work with Sunny Lachey, our IT department, to start compiling the START tool that has at a snapshot for all of you that tells you which performance measure has been denoted as identified in the community or the business survey. So you know the data that's already identified as the people we serve are saying this is important to them. So we are here just to give you an update on October 20, today, October 24. We were going to give you the START tool tomorrow, but we know that perhaps waiting until Monday is a better date. So just so you know, we will release that on Monday to all of you. Ken Jones and I would like an opportunity to meet with each of you. We think it might be easier to identify the performance measures, go through them, and identify where your priorities are to help in easing of the START tool. So we will be setting up those meetings. Once the findings of the START tool is really starting the conversation with the Mayor and Council where they would like to see budget allocations, the budget team will come back in December to share with you the results of that START tool and then to start the conversation regarding budget allocations or ideas for acceleration. That important tool is used by our departments to then identify supplementals for the coming budget year. So everything that's been moved up earlier in order for the people that need to make the decisions in their department, they already identify what you would like to see accelerated in the coming budget year. This is just an example of the START tool and the performance measures. Just wanted to remind the Council what it looked like. And Sunny Lachey, as I said, in IT is working to identify. In green, it will show you which performance measures are being achieved. And then if they're in red or coral color, those are areas that we still have not achieved our target.
Okay, as it relates to our performance-led budgeting process, once council's top priorities are identified, the departments will work with the Office of Strategic Management and Diversity on a hyper-focus of those measures to determine strategies for accelerating the achievement of those measures. So we have three approaches that we take. One is to collaborate, so we may work with, departments may collaborate together or with outside partners. So I just want to mention that during last year's budget process, we had a number of departments that collaborated together in their submittals for funding and additional resources as well as developing strategies. So we're working on breaking down those silos and having departments work together to help achieve those measures. The second thing we could do is shift resources. So maybe we have some areas where we're way exceeding our target, and we could shift some of those resources to help achieve the measures that you have identified as priorities. And then last, we have additional funds requested. So as part of the upcoming budget process, departments may request additional funds via supplemental for the operating budget or for projects in the CIP budget. Okay, I just want to briefly discuss the impact of the START tool results and the discussion on the top priorities that it had on last year's budget process. So if you remember, in February, you provided us feedback on your top priorities for that budget cycle. There was three measures that you wanted to accelerate or hyper-focus. Those are filling of safety in the city, filling of safety in the parks, and the PQI average rating of 70 or higher. And so the departments worked with the Strategic Management and Diversity Office developing strategies for advancing those measures. These strategies included cross-departmental collaboration to accelerate the achievement of the measures. And so, for example, the filling of safety in the parks involved collaboration with human services, police, the City Attorney's Office, as well as community services. And as part of the budget process, as Councilmember Adams mentioned earlier, $3 million additional funding over five years was provided in the CIP for the PQI. And then for the other two measures, an additional $900,000 funding was provided. Okay, so of these three performance measures that we focused in last year, I just thought we could take a minute to update you on how we are doing on these three measures. The chart that you see illustrates the percent change over the last three years. It should be noted that the departments have been implementing strategies over the past few years to advance these three measures, which is noted in these upward trends for most of these. And then, starting in 1920, as I just mentioned, additional funding was provided to help accelerate meeting the targets for these measures. So for these three measures, filling of safety in the city, it's trending up with a 1.3 percent increase. As far as payment quality index, this is just a preliminary estimate, but we're expecting PQI to change by 3.3 percent. We'll have that final number in February. And then the last measure, a filling of safety in the parks. So overall, there's a positive direction for filling of safety in the parks. Five of the six categories are trending up. The city, a filling of safety in city day parks is down by almost 4 percent, but we've seen significant improvements for parks at night in the neighborhood and desert parks. And with that, if you, that's the end of our presentation, if you have any questions for us.
Great, any questions?
Yeah, that's great.
That's awesome.
Nice work. Hurry, get out.
Great job.
I was kidding. Nice work, thank you.
Thank you for doing it. So thank you. Thanks, Mark, thanks, Rosa. All right, next is other post-employment benefit policy. This is just a follow-up information. Rini and Ken?
Good evening, I'm Rini Brodrick, your Internal Services Director.
Ken Jones, Deputy City Manager. Mayor and Council, as the mayor said, we're here just to provide you follow-up information. If you recall, during our budget development process before June, I think it was in April, we came to you and you gave us some direction on how to change post-OPEB, post-employment benefits. For us, that's retiree healthcare. You gave us some direction on how to change those, and we made those changes effective July 1st. We'll remind you of what those are tonight, and then we're going to just go over quickly the information that's in your packet that you requested at that same meeting. So during that meeting in April, you changed the inflation, you added inflationary increases for several of the retiree healthcare categories. You also directed staff to prorate the initial contribution for Group 3 so that people who worked here part-time, when they get to their 10th year, they get that initial contribution. And you also added that one-time benefits for Group 2 employees who leave before they're eligible for that entire benefit. So those are the changes you made, I'm just reminding you of those quickly. And then here are, here is the follow-up information that you requested from us that's in your packet. You asked for the composition of the 2009 OPEB committee, that information is in your packet. It's actually, I can tell you, it's, there were three people from Group 1, 10 people that ultimately ended up in Group 2, and seven people that ultimately ended up in Group 3. That's in your packet.
Yes, you also received a confidential letter from an attorney that was in your Friday packet, confidential packet, giving you legal advice about this issue, so.
You asked for, we gave you the information from the actuarial report that said, you asked about moving people from Group 3 to Group 2. The OPEB liability would go up by $20 million. The average annual cost in the first year would be about $600,000. But you wanted to see the actual report from the actuary, so that's in your packet.
We also provided in your memo comparisons of what other cities do with their retiree benefits. And I can say with confidence that we excel, we provide stronger retiree benefits than any of our, the comparison benchmark cities. And we also were asked to provide feedback from employees. So what we did, we had a survey that was online for two months, August and September. We had 277 employees who gave us their responses. And basically, we asked them, we explained how the post-retirement insurance had changed over years, and we asked them to give us how it impacted them. And that was included in your packet also, so there's 277 responses.
And then also, I added the standard and force bond rating. Although we had a AAA bond rating, they commented on our OPEB liability, so I included that in your packet for you to see as well. So those are all the things you asked for, and those are in your packet, and we're here to answer any questions or take any direction from you regarding that information.
I'll speak.
Lauren?
Thank you so much. I know there's been a lot of work on this issue, and it was so important me to read the statements of the employees, and that was a tremendous response we got from employees. And I read through everyone, paying special attention to those that feel that there was inequities and less to the people that were hired after July 1st, it's July 1st, right, 2009? Honestly, looking more at employees that were, that felt that issue and were hit hard by the issue in July 1st, 2009. This is a really difficult issue, and I recognize that we made progress back in the spring, and I really appreciate that we came together as a council and made some changes and adapted the rate. So it was really important. And I understand that we can't go back, that the council way, way before us had elected to give full medical retirement benefits to employees. That was really an unsustainable, unsustainable funding situation that was likely to go by the wayside. It was very distinct and different from other cities. So I understand that, but I'm still like, in my head and reading all of those narratives, I still feel like there's this basic unfairness that isn't being resolved and that we have to find a way, if not to completely resolve it, to look at ways where we can get halfway there, a quarter of the way there, some way there. Because I think we have to find a way to recognize people who on July 1st, 2009, weren't quite at 10 years, but that their service, their years of service time is not recognized, and they should have some kind of benefit or partial benefit that we can bring to them. I think a lot of the time, a lot of employees, we talked about this can on the phone, that there's this all-or-nothing approach, and it's very clear from those narratives that people think that that was not fair, not fair at the time. There was a lot of grumbling about it at the time, and that's weighed on people. And I know from having experienced myself when I was a lot younger that those kind of inequalities can really tear you apart and just eat away at you. And some of the issues, there's some tweaking that I think can be done. Some of the, when I read some of the employee concerns, one that really, or a couple that struck me are the people that were really close to the 10 years, and they actually would have qualified for 10 years. How we consider that they were full-time, but they weren't permanent employees. So they were full-time temporary employees that later became permanent employees. So they had that 10 years of service. In some, one case, I'm not sure if it's accurate, the person said that ASRS recognized them as being a 10-year employee, yet their own city doesn't recognize them as being a 10-year employee. So if there's any way we can find that employees that had 10 years, if you count temporary, full-time, and if you count pregnancy or leave of absence for a medical leave, we shouldn't punish someone for having taken off time to spend with their child. And because of that, they ended up getting punished and losing this huge benefit. That seems to me an inequality or a grievance that should be somehow resolved. And, you know, I'm not sure how we go about that, but I'm not satisfied just saying, well, we did what we could this spring. I feel like we could look at those issues of employees that had 10 years of service, if you include temporary, full-time positions before they finally became benefited. And if you look at some employees that stepped out or went part-time due to the pregnancy or illness, you know, I don't know how many people that is. I don't know if the rest of the employees would look at that and say, that's not fair. You know, maybe they wouldn't see it as fair, but I myself would like to see a pursuit of that. And finally, back in April, it's April, you recommended, well, I'm sorry, you didn't recommend, there was an option 5A, and that was talking about a one-time HRA contribution to Group 3 employees to recognize the time they were with the city prior to 2009 when the retiree healthcare policy changed. And there's a figure put out there, it's 5 percent. It amounts to a one-time cost for the city of $3.8 million. Doesn't necessarily have to be 5 percent, but it would be adding back per year of service prior to 2009. So they started in 2004, they'd have five years of prior service. They would get paid a prorate amount for each of those years. And it could be paid over a longer period of time, too. It doesn't necessarily have to be one budget year, but I wonder if we couldn't more deeply look at option 5A to resolve the overall unfairness of what happened on that day. I know a lot of cities amended their retirement plans, but I think we're one of the few, if not the only city, that decided that it was going to, other cities just said, if you're hired now or after July 1st, this will apply. But in our case, we didn't grandfather it in. So that's where some of the unfairness still continues to reign in people's perceptions. So in conclusion, I know I'm talking a lot, and I just want to just sum up that I feel like employees that had 10 years, if you include the temporary, full-time service, should be considered to be, have worked with the city for 10 years. And then employees who stepped out due to pregnancy or major medical leave, we shouldn't punish them for having taken time off to be with their child. That doesn't seem like the Tempe way. And then, like, those are the two, in a way, that's my two top interests. And also, I'd like to say that there seems to be an inequity there that we could maybe resolve by working with employees, maybe bringing back a negotiation and see if we can find some way to acknowledge the time that they're employees before 2009 that previously hasn't been acknowledged.
Mayor, if I could respond to the councilmembers' comments, just to fill in some of the gaps. I think you did a great job of giving a summary of some of those issues that you're concerned about. So let me fill in a couple of gaps, just so that everybody knows what we're talking about. everybody knows what we're talking about. So you mentioned employees, and I, and I went back and reread all of the comments because you had mentioned this to me and I wanted to make sure I picked up on all of those. And you mentioned that employees said, "I would have been 10 years, but I had a birth of a child and went on part-time, so I was a, probably a half-time employee for some period of time." And based on our rules at the time, you didn't reach 10 years full-time equivalent, right? You reached 10 years, but it wasn't full-time equivalent because part of that time was halftime. So that's consistent with how we do our healthcare policy in general. If you're a half-time, um, employee, you get half-time insurance benefit while you work here. So we applied that consistently in the retiree benefit too. But I don't disagree with you, if, if you're going to make a stark cutoff and say, "It's at 10 years," then maybe it's all of the people who have been here 10 years, whether you've worked here three-quarter time or halftime or all of that. So, I'm just filling in the blanks for you so you understand what's being asked. What's being asked is, so in the April meeting, you said, "For those employees who have been working part-time, don't do the full-time equivalent and make them work full 10-year, 10, uh, full-time equivalent. For a person working half-times, I mean, you have to be here 20 years before you get your initial $14,000 contribution." In April, you said, "Change that, at 10 years, give them something even though it's prorated." So we did that. We didn't make that change to go back and say, "And if you were here 10 years, we're gonna capture you in group two." So that's what you're asking for, everybody understands now, what we're saying is, you have, we, one more time.
10 years part-time.
What?
You're talking about 10 years part-time category.
I'm talking about, if you were here working for 10 years, but not always full-time equivalent.
Yeah.
So part of the time you were halftime, if you were here 10 years prior to 2009, we would have put you in group two. We didn't do that and you're asking us to do that. So I'm, I'm saying, I just wanna make sure everybody understands what, what you're saying. And then I would say, we have to, we will have to look at it, if you all want us to look at that, we'll look at that. And we'll look at it from the perspective of, is that a plan change that should have applied to everybody? And did somebody leave service here who would have otherwise been considered in group two and they left without that benefit? Because if we're gonna make a plan change, I'm, it might apply retroactively, we'll have to ask the attorneys.
But a, a different subset, which I mentioned, is what about people that were here 10 years full-time, but for the first year or two, whatever that timeframe was, there was definitely one or two people, I read in the list of the stories, that were here full-time, 10 years, they weren't necessarily benefited for one or two of those years and they lost out because of that.
So that's a different category and that is, people who weren't benefited for some period of time. They didn't have 10 years of benefited employment, in other words, you were working here as a temp.
Right.
Right? So that's another category. If you want us to look at that, we also didn't include those people. We didn't include that time in calculating who qualified for group two or three.
That's the one that sticks in the craw more than any.
For clarity, you didn't include that time, did you include the eight years of full, so they, they fall in the category of 10, less than 10, or is that category three?
Yes.
Yeah, so, but they're, they're getting that eight years, so, like anyone else coming out of college or wherever you're coming from, you start off and you, you, you work with the benefits and, and the pay you get, you get a full-time position, hey, you get all the, the bells and whistles now.
Before you tell us what you want us to look like, we're just clarifying what, what was being asked here. What was being asked is, one, if, if you were working part-time, let's count that part-time as a year, if you worked here a year, even if it was halftime for a year. That's, what's one thing you've asked. The other is, can we capture time when you were here as a temporary employee, not a benefited employee, can we capture that time?
But you were full-time.
Full-time, non- temporary, so there's full-time regular and there's full-time temp. You're hired as a temp knowing that it's unbenefited. That's, I, everybody's clear on that, right?
And there's temps that don't work full-time also.
Sure, sure. Um, so, so those two questions, we understand. And then you got to the more general question of, this was awfully black and white. We, we picked a date and, and let me just explain how that happened. I wasn't on that committee and I wasn't in this job and I know how that happened. The committee was given direction, the committee was represented by all members of all the groups, but the committee was given direction, you, you can decide whether that was a mistake. And the direction was, keep the benefit cost under this amount per year. So they worked with all of the groups, targeting a dollar amount. You know, maybe that could have been more fair if we had said to people, "Go treat people fairly, come back to us and tell us how much it costs and let us figure out if we can afford that." That, that might have been different. It, so, a lot of people, as, as Councilmember QB said, in the, in the report, said, "I was here nine years and 11 months, I got the same benefit as the person who started the next day. I didn't get any credit for being here at all." If you all think that's unfair, Councilmember QB pointed back to one of the options that the employees came up with, which we gave you last time, which was, give people credit for the time they were here before the change was made. So in other words, instead of a stark black and white, let's phase this in. If you were here nine and a half years, you're in group three, but we're gonna add money to your account. If you were here eight years, we're gonna add less to your account, if you were here seven years, a little bit less, that, that's what you're talking about. So that was the third request, which is, can we consider doing something to phase in the group three folks, knowing that you have an attorney's opinion and I'm not gonna tell you what that says, but it may say that you might face some risk by moving people from a group three to a group two, that sounds like a plan change, that might...
That isn't moving a group three to group two, it's a one-time payment though, that's different.
Right, so what I'm saying is, in lieu of moving people from one group to another, can you leave them in group three and add to their HRA to some extent?
Right, that's the question.
That's, all I'm saying is, that's one of the things that was on your April, uh, menu here, and you probably shied away from it because it said $3.8 million. Um, that would be a one-time cost, it would address a large number of employees in the city who are currently in group three, who would have been in group two because they were here in 2009. It would address a large number of employees. So if you want us to look at that, as Councilmember QB said, we just put a number in there for example, 5% for every year you were here. That would mean the person who was here almost 10 years would have $8,500 added to their account, a little bit less. So, I'm just clarifying what you're asking for, I hope I'm doing a good job, but, as long as everybody understands, and then you can tell us whether there's consensus for us to look at that. Councilmember Adams?
Can I have a question? So, what you're saying is, if someone was here nine years and, so you would go back and give them $175 per month for the nine years previously, is that what you're saying?
We would give them...
I'm not, I'm not very clear on what you're saying.
No, no, we would give them something. The, the example that I gave was 5% per year that you had worked here when, in 2009. If you did that, the person who had been here almost 10 years would get $8,500 added to their account. That's at 5% per year. Uh, the person who had only been here one year, who just started in, in 2009, would get $853 out of their account, because they were only here for a year before the policy changed.
So we can do a calculation for $175 a month?
We can do whatever you wanna do. We can do whatever you wanna do, I, I'm just, I'm trying to clarify what was requested so that you can give us consensus to either do it or not do it. To look at, not to, not to make the change, but to examine the change and come back to you with more detail.
And I see where the heartburn is, because people signed up for, you know, they thought they were gonna have, um, medical insurance when they retired and then it was changed, you know, down the road. So, it, I mean, it's a really difficult situation, I did read the confidential memos about, you know, what, would that would result in and, um, I, I guess, maybe this is a compromise for, for looking at some different figures for, um, giving the people that didn't, didn't have the 10 years, um, go back and look at some different, um, options for financial...
So Mayor, just to comment on that, just, I, I put it in the memo and it was in the question that we asked the employees, we, we listed all of the changes that have been made to OPEB. You asked us to find out from the actuary and from the attorney what would happen moving people in group three to group two. But the fact is, there are a lot of other changes that were made. When I started here, you got free membership in the city's health plan that you never had to leave for your life, even after you reached Medicare age, for you and your family, free. Not an HRA, you were gonna stay on our self-insured plan for the rest of your life for free. That was unsustainable. That changed back in 2002 or '03, it was a, it was a three-year change, so there are a lot of changes that have taken place. But, but we didn't ask the actuary or the attorney to comment on those changes. Councilmember Navarro?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just, I mean, going through that experience in 2008 and, and having tough, uh, decisions we had to make on a variety of different categories, I mean, this was a huge, um, decision. I, I have to say, you know, at that time, having the groups meet and having them come up with a plan and, and I don't know, Ken, you know, money, here's your money, or let's find something close, if we can go back and look at that, I, we can't go back and do that though, that's the only thing. And I know that other cities had to make drastic changes, in fact, my, the city I worked for, we don't have this type of, uh, lot, plan that Tempe has. And we had to do category, so there were cutoff dates on a variety of different categories and I know some cities, um, five or so, or six in the valley, don't even have a plan, don't even do this stuff. I, I, I'm reading some of this stuff and I, I understand, um, I wanna be that city that offers the best benefits, 'cause reading some of these, uh, comments is like, the reason why I chose Tempe is because of the benefits and aftercare benefits and stuff like that. So, even though it's not full coverage, which was offered way back when, even though it's, it's broken up into different categories, it's still one of the best plans in the valley. And, that's gotta be recognized too. And I understand trying to, you know, get employees, I'm, I'm not opposed to, uh, anyone going back to the group or a group looking at some things or ways we can improve, if there's something we improve on and has minimal cost or just a change here, a change there, that's great. One of the things that I've heard was, you know, for the group two and group three, if they get a, a, a sum of money every month or whatever to subsidize costs, well, maybe they can go out and shop, uh, a coverage that can help them cover the cost with their plan, they have the option to do that. I don't know if those are things that can make it better or worse, but if there's things like that, then, then great, but I, I think, with everything else we're up against, with other things that has been staying here tonight, things that we're doing right and, and knowing that we have infrastructure and, and, and streets and everything that, that we're coming up to now, I don't wanna weigh employees in that, but, man, it's, it's one of the decisions we have to make, residents, employees, all the stuff, the business, we have to take in all that, uh, in the consideration. And with what I'm presented here tonight and what we're looking at is kind of a Cadillac, and I hate to say this, or I'm not gonna hate to say this, I know that from other cities, we're the Cadillac in insurance. This city is. That's it, hands down. I compared it to a lot of cities, this city is the best in benefits. I, maybe not in every little area, but damn, pretty damn good, folks. Sorry.
Councilmember Iredana Savage?
Yeah, yeah, I could probably say anything, follow that up. Um, you know what, I just, I just, I was here too, it was kinda like one of the first things that I had to address when I became a council member and, you know, what really sucked is, I had to address the same exact thing when I was a school board member. And we eliminated it completely. And there was no additions to a fund, no payments into an H, HRA, um, HSA, right?
HRA.
HRA. And, and so, you know, I, I totally understand and I wanted to say thank you to the 277 people that responded, because I know those are the people that are impacted one way or the other and, and, you know, that we never made changes, uh, to, you know, one to negatively impact somebody's future, that was never the intent, but it was to be able to create a program that's sustainable for years to come and for me, that's something that's really important. Um, so, if, if we are gonna look at anything, whatever it may be, I, I, I would never go back to moving group three to group two, I, I just don't think that's something that we can do, I think that's, that's just out of reach. If there's a way for a one-time payment for a phase in, but yet $3 million, number's way too high for me. But, you know, I get it, I understand, I know there was a lot of people that were impacted that didn't quite make that, 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 uh, that cutoff, but I have to agree with, you know, Councilmember Navarro, I'm really proud of the council, I'm, we're proud of the group that got together and came up with a plan that we could sustain. And I think this is something that we should still be proud of and if there's a way that we can lessen the impact, I'm li, I'm open to seeing what that might be. Um, but, you know, at the same time, I really wanna make sure that we focus and let our employees know how valuable they are, not necessarily with just, you know, OPEB, uh, opportunities, but what they do here every single day and, uh, making sure that they know that, you know, they are the heartbeat of, of this community. So we want them to stay here, we want people to want to come here, to work here, and, um, you know, I, I don't know what the answer is, I, I'm not gonna say no and I'm not gonna say yes, but I'm, I'm gonna, gonna try to stay a little open-minded to see if there is something that we can do to soften the blow a little, but at some point, I think we, we've gotta move forward. And, um, you know, this might be my, my last, my last thought.
Councilmember Navarro?
No, just to add on to that, I, I, I think that it's kinda said, we, I would love to make sure that we're sustaining this, because if we do go through a downturn, I would still hope that we still sustain it. I hope we don't change it up again. And, in history, there's been cities that had to change it up. So, my goal is, this can be the constant, if we can make it, I'm not opposed to not having any discussion or to talk about making it better, I think we always should make it better, because I still want this city to be the best. I, it, it has to be the best out of all the cities, so, I'm not opposed to that at all.
And, you know, I, I do wanna thank the employees, um, groups for bringing this to our attention back in last April. Um, the employee groups are in place to represent our employees and as a whole, they know that they feel, and I, I value the process, that, what, what they feel that we have in place for them, 'cause they do value it. I mean, as Councilmember Navarro mentioned, I mean, I'll, I'll put up, I mean, ours, our benefits is incomparable, as, as Rini mentioned, compared to the other cities throughout the entire valley. And I know that we do value our employees' feedback to get the needs met and we wanna make sure that the voices were heard. And obviously, this is a sensitive subject for employees and I think we understand the uncertainty, they understand the uncertainty of retirement as well as medical coverage, um, the ability to live a financially stable life after, you know, once they retire. But I, I will tell you, I think it's good that the employees' committee that was put together to solve the problem to where we are today, 'cause this is just informational only, if we're looking at it, um, that, the committee group that was put together really is a diverse group, um, to solve this, the challenges that we have with the liability, the liability that we have. And it ended up in the results that we offered back then, with, with the adjustments that we made, based on the feedback from the employee groups. And I think, changing benefits and having cut updates, obviously is very difficult, it's always gonna be difficult. And I know we look at other cities, um, we always, just because we look at other cities and we're so far ahead of them, doesn't mean that there's always, there's not room for us to improve. So I think, I just want our employees to know that we value them very much, obviously, because look at the package that we offer, the benefits, um, I think is the reason why a lot of people choose to live here and, or, or work here and then obviously, if you see how many people have been here for the years and years and years and the emails I send out to thanking employees for serving, you know, five, 10, 20, 30 years, is, is valuable for us, it's, it's a lot, I, I don't think any of us on this dais doesn't think it's valuable to make sure that we can offer the best quality of life for our employees with the benefits and the resources we have. I just, want our res, our employees to know that. I, I have to do one question though, Ken, if, if group three employee has been with the city for 10 years and they move on to another job elsewhere, do they get to keep that, the HRA benefit?
Yeah, group three employees, when they hit 10 years, get $14,000 plus an inflationary increase every year, whatever that amount might be, and then for every month thereafter, they get $175. And that money's put into an HRA account that can't be touched by anybody but them. So they get to withdraw it when they leave the city, whether they retire or resign, or they, they have to meet the eligibility requirements to withdraw it to use for purchasing of retiree healthcare insurance.
When being group three, if they'd been here 10 years, if being group two?
No, no, I said 10 years.
No, he's asking a group three person who hits 10 years.
Who hits 10 years?
Okay, gotcha.
Can they take their HRA with the...
And, and...
That's a, that's pretty good. No, we do, go ahead, Roger.
So not, so I'm correct, there's an inflation, so every year, there can be an adjustment to that rate that's going into their, it's not, it's not one set fund.
Effective July 1st, you change that. So now the $14,000 is slightly more than 14,000 and the 175 is slightly more than 175.
Well, I don't know if everyone knew that, that was kind of a, a, a good deal that we did on top of that, which I think is huge, but even to that said, if it's something that they have to use the money that the city, uh, says this is where your insurance they have to use the money that the city says this is where your insurance is, or maybe it's something they look at to say they get options, they get.
Yes, just to be clear, Mayor, none of the employees who started here after the policy changed in 2009, we get very few complaints. Like you said, Councilmember Navarro, it's a good plan. It's better than almost every other city, I would say. However, there were people here who started under a different plan, and this plan is inferior to what they thought they were going to get. The only complaint you're getting, the only question you're getting is from the people who were here in 2009 for some period of time and banked on some benefit that they now don't get.
Understood, I remember that.
Nobody's complaining about the Group Three benefit who started here with a Group Three benefit.
Right, right.
Vice Mayor QB?
So it's important to remember, and I could be wrong about this, I don't have firsthand knowledge about what I'm about to say, but in July 2009, other cities were making this decision, but they made a decision from employees going forward, hired the next day, and it didn't apply to the employees that were hired, hired before that. I may be wrong.
There's some information in your packet on that, and there are cities who had some benefit that said, we will continue to provide this benefit to those who are here, and as of this date, anybody who's hired new won't get that. I think there was one city. Rini's going to look at that while we're.
So if there's, it's the will of the council to look at some version of Option 5A, which is one-time HRA, HRA contribution to Group Three employees to recognize their time with the city in 2009, when their retiree healthcare policy changed, to have options within that. I don't know if we have council will, I would like to see options presented. And also, I keep coming back to that employee that has worked here, that worked there 10 years, that had worked and toiled 40 hours a week or more for 10 years, and ASRS recognizes them as a 10-year employee, but somehow, we didn't, and that just seems fundamentally unfair to me. And I don't know how many that is, maybe it's one, maybe it's two, I think I read of two in the reports, but, you know, that seems to me like an actuarial mistake that should be remedied.
We will look at anything you want us to look at. You give us consensus, and we'll look at it.
Is there consensus from council, just for informational purposes, to find out what the cost would be, what the impact would be, what would affect, what it have on a bond rating, I know that's going to be an issue, and, I mean, it depends on how many people that addresses.
Are we talking about the situation that Councilmember QB just stated?
Yes.
About the people who worked 10 years, but maybe not full-time?
Is that okay with the council?
I always like to see the number on that.
Okay, and then we'll also go, if that's consensus, is that consensus, Mayor?
Is everybody okay with that?
Okay, and then we will, I'll just let you know, we'll also come back with an attorney's opinion on.
Yes, that's the other thing.
Do you have to retroactively go back and find the employees who left that would have had this benefit and change it? Because it sounds like a plan change to me.
Mayor? Just a question, I don't know, is this an E-session discussion on with, we have legal opinion and a lot of other things, is this something that?
It most likely will be, because it's attorney-client privilege.
Right.
It's legal advice.
I'm sorry, I don't have a mic, but if council wishes to consult on that matter, if the attorney consultation will be essential, and we'll be inviting that outside council to attend your session.
Perfect.
Perfect.
And then, so that was one issue, and did you seek consensus on the other, which is, do we want to do something for Group Three to increase their benefit? That was the second question.
One-time, one-time contribution.
A one-time contribution to, for the people who were here in 2009.
Pro-rated per year.
We lumped, have this all into the E-session?
Yeah.
No.
No.
I don't know.
So there's only the direction of the people that have been here 10 years, you got that direction. What direction are you looking for consensus on, Vice Mayor QB?
That we consider Option 5A as presented.
What's 5A?
April, which was presented in the memo, April 25th. And, no, at that meeting, we decided, here's a couple of things we're going to do, we're going to ask for more information to go back and look at other things. So it's not as if we discounted that, and that's not my recollection, but.
No, no, I, I don't think so. We're not going to go back and relitigate what we did on April 2nd, we're looking at enhancing some, this is information coming back to us that.
Yeah, April 25th, and Councilmember Adams asked for a lot more information to be presented, and then I asked to find out, can we find out the stories or what people's accounts are, what happened to people, because I wanted to take the abstraction of these numbers and see how it's impacted people's lives, and then we would come back and consider, we agreed what we could agree on then, and then we wanted to get more information. And if there's not the council will, there's not the council will, but Option 5A, it's not as presented, let's up or down vote on this, it's just, can we look at variations of Option 5A, which was a one-time HRA contribution to Group Three employees to recognize their time, prorated, how many years they had before 2009.
Is this Group Three you're talking about?
Uh huh. That was, I think, at that time, I think, and I have to look at the minutes, the biggest issue was the $3.8 million. Did you say that earlier?
That was one option of five, you know, doing the 5%, doesn't have to be that option, but that was my point.
Robin, you have something while we've looked at that?
Yeah, I'm not really sure where we're at right now, but I'm just going to tell you where I'd like to go, that's helpful. I, I think, I guess I would ask, is there an appeal process? If somebody feels like maybe they should fit into a different category, is there an appeal process for that? I mean, to me, I just don't feel like this is really the place to do that, but I think if there was some issues, is there a way that there's a pathway for our employees to appeal the category that they're in?
Well, that process was pretty well laid out, and I don't think anybody's rights were violated according to the policy. If they appealed, they would be appealing the.
Rules.
The rules. They would be saying, I don't think this is a fair rule. I think they were all treated according to the rule, so any appeal would.
Maybe it's, maybe a bigger picture is we look at the rule, and I don't know if it's relevant even now, but it would probably be good to.
So we're going to do that, the issue of whether it's 10 years or whether you were part-time, we're going to look at that, we're going to bring it back to you and let you know how many people were affected. And now the question is, when we gave you what the employees proposed.
What did you just say? You were going to look at 10 years?
One of the council.
Yeah, I got, right, I don't think I'm hearing what she hears, what you said, so.
What we are going to come back with is, for those people who worked here, they were employed with the city for 10 years, but may not have been benefited for part of those years, which excluded them from Group Two, or worked part-time for part of, part of the 10 years, so they weren't here 10 full-time equivalent years, they were here 10 years, we're going to bring you back and tell you how many employees that is, if you want to address those employees.
Oh, that's not what I thought we were doing.
What'd you think we were doing?
Well, I was kind of not looking at that process, I was kind of just looking more about, you know, is there a way to, you know, maybe enhance that phase of those Group Threes that, you know, didn't quite make that cutoff, right, that had time with us, and to see if there is a possibility of, you know, maybe softening that blow just a little bit.
And that's the second question.
That's where I'm, okay, yeah, that's what I thought, yeah.
That's the second question, do you also?
I'm okay with the second question, I'm not great with the first question.
The second question, this was presented to us last, back in April, there is a $3.8 million price tag to that.
Not necessarily, that's the percentage given, but Ken, you mentioned that there could be various options presented.
What the employees proposed on April 25th was a 5% per year for the years they had served as of 2009. That's what they proposed, but we understand that if it weren't, if it were half of that, the cost would be half as much, because it's a one-time cost. We can come back and tell you what that cost would be from 1% to 5%.
We're going to, in my opinion, I feel like we're going to open up the can, because we're going to have the part-time employee that has 10 years, but two of them, well, let's just say were part-time, I mean, were part-time, and then I got the employee that's nine years, maybe nine years and a half full-time, started full-time, do we include that employee or the employee that went almost to eight years? So then we have this.
There's a cutoff.
Where's the cutoff going to be now? Because the theory of back then is, we made a hard decision, we have to make a cutoff. This is where the line has to be, and it sucks. And it really did, because you had people out there that were like, hey, I got a job here because of this benefit, and I thought I was going to have it. Okay, you didn't, and we did something that we had to do, and still a lot better than a lot of the cities around us, but we had to make a strong cutoff point. Every city had to do that. I had to do that in our, in the city I worked for. It was like, here's the cutoff point, and my brother was affected by that. But that was the rule, and that was the game. But the thing is, eight years or whatever, people are going to have to make adjustments. They're going to have to make adjustments. I can't see government making adjustments for everybody because of some shortfall and someone got left out. It's life, I don't know what to say. It's a hard thing to address, but we had to make a line.
Robin?
No, I just want to, I just want to be clear, I agree with Councilmember Navarro, I mean, it sucked when we had to do it, but if it has to do with the rules and regulations and why we did it, I'm not really, I don't want to go back and relitigate that and talk about that again. I want to move forward, I'm not, I'm not opposed to looking at some way to soften that blow, just to see what those numbers might be, and first and foremost, I think we have to see who it would impact, because that would, that could totally change the whole dynamic. But, but if it has to come to, you know, what was decided upon at the council back in 2009, what rules or regulations that were implemented to make it, I'm not willing to go back there and readdress it.
So it sounds like, Mayor, we, you have to tell me, I'm not sure, we might not have consensus to go back and look at those people who the rule was just the rule, and if you were part-time, it didn't count, and if you were unbenefited, that didn't count. You have to tell me whether you want us to bring you back any information more, any more information about that rule.
Councilmember Adams?
I guess my impression from the letter that we received on Friday was that it really is not recommended to go back, because it was such a slippery slope, so.
Yeah, I'm reluctant to tell you what the attorney told you, but.
Make sure we talk about it differently, between moving three back to two, that's one thing, and moving a few people who actually worked for 10 years into that category, that's two different things, and I don't know if we've received full legal advice on both of those.
Maybe we should, before we move forward, maybe we should have legal advice.
Yeah, good.
Take the mic, take the mic.
The legal component is integral in any decisions that you make here. It's my very strong recommendation that you continue discussion of this matter in E-session and have the appropriate council there. Judy will be there, the outside council who did provide you an opinion that you have. I really probably don't want to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor got an idea. Can we just postpone any action today?
Yeah.
And put it on E-session, we can have a discussion, and then decide what we want to do from there. Are you guys okay with that? Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's wise, and I also know that this is why having a date certainly is hard, but it's also why it's necessary, as, I mean, as Councilmember Navarro mentioned. I mean, because I know there's people that stayed here based on the decision, and I also know that people maybe have left our organization based on that decision, and it's, I'm not saying it's not easy and hard, but it's why it's so important, it's hard. And it's why also this council and our staff is really in the position we're in with the type of benefits that we offer. That's why we offer the best benefits we can, bar none, out of any city in the Valley, in the state for that matter. And I think that's something that should not go unrecognized, but at least we know we're compassionate, we care. So this will be continued on executive session, the next executive session.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Hold on, an hour until postponement, thank you.
Next item is Tempe Employees Paid Family Leave Program.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I'm Rini Rodrick, Internal Services Director.
And I'm Kathleen Broman, I'm the Human Resources Manager, working with employee benefits.
We are here this evening to talk to you about paid family leave. What we would like to do is basically review for you what is happening in the world of paid family leave throughout the country, and also look at our leave programs and how they compare and how they meet the needs of our employees. So we're going to do a little bit of a background, and then Kathleen will talk about current trends, and then I will delve into reviewing our leave programs, and bear with us only because I think most of us don't pay attention to these programs until we need them, and I do think it is valuable for you all to understand what we currently offer, which gives us then the context for looking at where we might have some gaps. And then we will answer questions, and we happy to discuss your recommendations. One thing I will mention when we're talking about paid family leave, that does include parental leave. Parental leave is a subcategory of family leave, but we're really looking at family leave because we think in addition to situations where there's birth, adoptions, foster placement, we also are concerned about being able to take care of employees when they have an illness or they have a family member with illness. So this topic does touch a couple of performance measures, achieve a city employee turnover rate less than or equal to the Valley benchmark cities average, and also achieve ratings and strongly agree or agree with the employee engagement efforts greater than or equal to the national benchmark cities as measured in the Tempe Employee Survey. Both of these really talk to helping employees have a good work-life balance as they perform their work for us and give us these, those great data on our surveys, on our business and our resident surveys. So just a little bit of background, as I think you all are probably aware, as the Internal Service Director, I have HR under my jurisdiction, and I've had HR for about 11 years now. And one of the hallmarks of Tempe, and one of the things that I think we all love about it, is that we are employee-centric. And as a part of that, especially from the HR world, we know that we do not do anything without consulting our employee groups. We have our six-sided partnership, and then, of course, we have our individual negotiations with our, with our groups. But our, our interaction and our involvement with our partnership is so robust that we don't even do job description changes without involving them. So whether it's job descriptions, it's HR guideline policies, it's RFPs for benefits, you know, all along that continuum, up to and including MOUs, of course, we get participation from the employee groups. And so that, I think, is one of the hallmarks of Tempe, and it has resulted in a very robust leave program. But one of the things that, in looking at this issue that HR has discovered, is that we think we do have a little bit of a gap that exists in a couple of areas, and one might be with less tenured employees who haven't had a chance to accrue a bank of vacation and sick time that they can use when they need it. So we'll talk about that a little bit here as we go through. And we, I will be telling you, I'm going to give you the punchline already, at the end, we're going to suggest that we really continue this, try to solve this issue with our employee groups in our upcoming negotiations, working with partnership, so. But Kathleen's going to talk a little bit about what's happening nationally with this issue.
So I'd like to start first, where's, oh, here, I'm sorry, doing a bad, there we go. I'd like to start with the current federal law as it exists today, and that is the Family Medical Leave Act, or the FMLA. This provides for 12 work weeks of unpaid leave that is job-protected, so it's time you can take off and your job is held for you. This is for qualifying circumstances, the circumstances include birth, adoption, foster care for newborns or children, a person or employee's own serious health condition, as well as care of a family member, and most recently added to the FMLA is care of military members or next of kin. But there are some national trends going on, both at the federal, the state, and the local level, and I'd like to recognize Sarah Razavi, who is an ASU student who did provide information on this topic to us and did some research for us, so we appreciate that. There has been some federal legislation that was introduced, actually, this spring. One is the New Parents Act, and also sort of accompanying it is the Child Rearing and Development Leave Empowerment Act, that's a lot to say, also CRADL. Those had to do with providing, those were introduced, and they would be providing one to three months of paid leave, and consequently, also, you could get paid childcare, but you would need to defer your social security benefit or take a lesser social security benefit. So that is something that is on the floor right now. The other one is the Family and Medical Insurance Leave Act, or Family Act, and this would actually, this is actually proposed as a joint employee-employer payroll tax that would come out of everyone, you know, that would actually pay for a certain percentage of paid leave. So those are currently, currently going through legislation. States with, who currently have laws or are planning to implement family leave insurance programs, all of these are either funded by employer and/or employee payroll taxes, so they kind of follow along with what the Family Act is. Currently, California, Rhode Island, New Jersey, and New York have these plans. Washington DC, Washington, and Massachusetts are in the process, they have laws passed. Those benefits will start being, being received right about 2020, 2021, so they're still in, you know, working on that. And then most recently, this summer, Connecticut and Oregon have passed laws. Those will actually start seeing benefits paid out about 2023, so it takes some time to get those up and running. With US cities with paid leave programs, currently, there are over 50 cities that do offer some sort of paid leave or parental leave program. These are funded through actual operating budgets, city operating budgets. Some of the cities include San Francisco, Atlanta, Chicago, Boston, Portland, and Seattle that are currently have family and/or parental leaves. On the local front, we actually have six local agencies that have some sort of leave, primarily, they are offering. Primarily, they are offering parental leave. They are not offering paid, paid family leave. So those agencies, I would just point out, none of them are, are part of our, our, our six local cities that we use for our local market for salary survey purposes and those sorts of things. But they are obviously local agencies in Arizona. Five of the six are offering parental leave. They are offering anywhere from two weeks up to 12 weeks of paid leave at 100%. The one that's sort of the outlier at this point is Surprise. They actually, they have a, basically it's a disability insurance. So it's employer-paid, but it's administered by a third-party administrator. And it really follows like a short-term disability benefit. So even though it's employer-paid, like your first two weeks, you use your own vacation time or your own sick time, and then it pays at 75%. So that's what Surprise does. But Surprise is also is actually a paid medical leave. So it will cover you not just for, you know, birth of a baby. It will actually pay, it's a personal injury sort of, sort of plan as well.
All right, next I want to talk about the leave programs that we have here for Tempe employees. But before I do that, I'd like to introduce Heather Estrada, who is right there. Heather, you have to stand or at least wave to counsel. Heather, once I explain our leave programs to you and I give you a headache, you're going to understand how complicated some of this is and how much work it is. It's Heather's full-time job to manage leave for our employees. And she is a great resource. And if you have any questions, if I confuse you too much, you can ask Heather and she can explain it better than I can. We do follow Family and Medical Leave Act here at the city, but we actually take it a little bit further. And we guarantee 17 weeks for our employees. So that is 17 weeks. It, it, it doesn't mean that 17 weeks are paid. And I'll get into that, but it is guaranteed that their jobs are protected. And in fact, we actually protect jobs for two years ultimately. When someone, it gets into a situation where they can't continue to work, as we go through all of these benefits and provide them with a safety net, we will hold their job for two years to allow them to come back to work. So, which I can tell you, most other cities hold for six months. So. So during this family and medical leave time, the accrued leave that employees can use are, you know, sick or medical leave, vacation, personal days, exempt leave, comp time, and sabbatical leave. And those who unfortunately might have to go off for an extended period of time, we have a menu of options. Compassionate leave is something that employees can use during the first 60 days that they're off. And this is a donation program. And I will tell you that our employees are very generous at donating employees who needed their time. In fact, sometimes what happens is we get too many donations and some of the time is given back to the person who made the donation. So we're pretty proud of that. After compassionate leave, we offer catastrophic leave. That kicks in after 60 days off and that's paid at 100% of your pay. If you run out of your own personal leave time, sick vacation, whatever, at 60 days, you get four weeks of 100% of your pay and it's called catastrophic leave. If God forbid, after three months, you are still not able to come back to work, you go to the city's short-term disability program, which pays you at 66 and 2/3 of your salary. And unfortunately, from time to time, we do have employees that need longer time off. And at six months, they're eligible for ASRS disability if they're covered by ASRS. Or if they are public safety, PSPRS employees, the city funds that long-term disability plan. So. This chart gives you a general idea of the accruals that employees can earn for vacation and medical leave. So it's a, a very generous vacation accrual, but there are times when it may not be enough for employees. So again, this has been part of the MOU negotiations. There is a cap on vacation at 450 hours. And, but there is no cap on leave, on your sick leave or medical leave accruals. This chart here gives you just a sample, a snapshot of the calendar year 2018 to give you a sense of leave balances. So for example, in 2018, we had a total vacation leave balance of 361,432 vacation hours that were in our employees' leave balances. And that's an average of 226 hours if you look, if you assume that we have a workforce of 1,600 employees. We do cash out. We have a number of different programs that allow some cash out. You can see those numbers there for a total of $909,913 in 2018 is what was paid out in excess vacation and sick leave. So just to give you a sense of what is available to our employees when they get into situations where they need extended time off. This chart tries to show succinctly, and hopefully it does a little bit, what happens when an employee has their own serious health condition. The first couple of months, they can use their own time. They can have compassionate leave donations. At the third month hallmark, they have catastrophic leave, which is the four weeks paid at 100%. When they get to the fourth, fifth, and sixth month, they're on our city disability, which is 66 and 2/3%. And after six months, as I mentioned earlier, they're eligible for ASRS or the city long-term disability, which again is at 66 and 2/3%. When it is a situation where it's care of a family member, it's a little different in that the first three months are basically the same. So, but the, you can still use catastrophic leave. You can use your own paid time. You can have compassionate leave donations. But when it is a situation where an employee is off to help a family member, they are not eligible then for city disability or ASRS long-term disability or the city's LTD. That's only for employee serious health condition. And the last slide here shows you what we offer for really what we consider parental leave, which is birth, adoption, foster, care of newborn. And in that situation, the first two months are the same, but you are not eligible. And that, that can include compassionate leave. So you can use your own time. You can have compassionate leave donations. But you're not eligible for catastrophic or disability unless there's some sort of a medical complication. So if we're just talking about taking time off for bonding and care of the newborn, this, this is a little bit more limited, obviously, than other situations. You're still eligible to take off up to 17 weeks, but it's a matter of using your own time or having compassionate leave. Just to give you an idea, this last slide here shows you a sample of what hap, what has happened over the last three years when we look at how our employees have used FMLA. The top line shows you again for birth, adoption, foster, replacement. In 2018, for example, we had 49 employees who used FMLA for this category. Nine went into an unpaid status for part of the time, not the complete time, but part of that time. Out of those nine who fell into a no-pay status for part of that time, seven had less than four years with the city. So that is one area where we're thinking that we might, we might have a gap here where we're, when we look at protecting employees. The other area on the deck there is the employee's own condition. In that situation, we had, let's see, we had 49 employees who went out in 2018 for, oh, I'm sorry, for the employee's own condition. No, we had 117 employees. Heather will be correcting me, right? We had 117 employees who went out for their own condition. Of those, 26 went into a no-pay status and eight of those had five or less years with the city. So sometimes we do have, again, with the employee's own condition, we do have situations where employees can go into a no-pay status because they've run out of time. We have generally with our negotiations, and I think this is fairly standard even across the country, when you, when you deal with negotiations and what you put in contracts, you oftentimes do find more generous leave for seniority. It's one way to recognize longevity in a city is to, you know, provide additional leave time for those employees who've been here for a while. But I think we might have an unintended consequence here where we have a gap. So what staff is recommending tonight is that we work with our employee groups to look at this and see what we can come up with and come back to counsel with.
Great, thanks, Rini. Thank you so much for this information.
No, I did nothing, sorry, Mayor.
I don't know if, I mean, the years I've been here, I don't know if I've seen such a comprehensive presentation of all the leave benefits.
Did I give you a headache?
No, this is, this is really good. I mean, in doing the thorough analysis that you did, it does look like, as you mentioned, there's some gaps. And I think that, when especially when it comes to some of the newer employees, that there haven't been much opportunities for those employees to accrue some much-needed time. And I know there are some safeguards in place when it comes to catastrophic or compassionate leave, but I know that there's a lot of different members or employees that have different circumstances that we can't predict or what we know. So thank you for at least identifying those gaps and I look forward to our discussion. Councilmember Adams?
Just quickly, I like the trend that in 2016, we had 142 and then in 2018, we went to 117 employees who are having to use their own time and were seriously ill. And I would be curious if our wellness program is, if there's any connection with that. Just throwing it out there.
I'd like to think so. Thank you for mentioning.
Be that, not a problem. And I think that it's a great idea to have, go back to employees groups and have them make their recommendations and then let us know in the future. I mean, that's a great way of how we resolve things in the city of Tempe. And so I would just recommend that we do that and then meet up after you get your feedback from them.
Councilmember Adana Savage?
I'm just trying to re-compose myself. Heather, thank you for what you do. My goodness. But yeah, I just, I say this is, it's really good information. And I think it comes to what we're trying to do to make sure that we're taking care of our employees. But I agree with Councilmember Adams. I think this is something that you like, your recommendation is to take it back to the employee groups and see where they, what they would like to see us make some changes on. And I know the mayor mentioned it too. There are some gaps, especially with some of our newer employees. And I can see that we need to pay some attention. And I certainly hope that they come back with something that, you know, we can look at, look at and hopefully implement in the future. So yep, I'm, I'm good with your recommendation. So thank you for the work.
Thank you.
Kivie?
So thanks so much for meeting with me yesterday and having a great discussion. And I so appreciate the research that you've done. And thank you for acknowledging the student that did some of that research. That was amazing what Sarah did. And I have a clear understanding now and, you know, the gap, it doesn't surprise me. And I want to sort of bring a human face to it. So I have permission from an employee to talk about an example of why that gap matters. Because I think we've seen tonight that these narratives or hearing from employees about specific cases can really help us to visualize and understand the problem. So I was approached by an employee who's struggling with the issue right now and in foreseeable future as well. And the employee's been with the city under four years, so a new employee. And we find that this is where the gap is, you know, with the newer employees. When a family member is diagnosed with cancer, the employee needed time off to take their spouse to oncology appointments and chemo treatments, surgical consults. They needed to be home post-surgery to aid the spouse in the recovery. And so you can imagine what this did to this person's accrued sick time and that they had been able to bank. So while dealing with that crisis, the employee suffered an injury and needed surgery and extensive physical therapy and struggled to find compassionate leave donations. It's not, you know, you're not supposed to ask for them, but sometimes people don't necessarily know who needs them. And it was very difficult for this employee. The doctor would not sign off on this person going back to work early return. So this person had to get compassionate leave in order to be able to not go to unpaid status and then threaten her family's security. So while going through all of this upheaval with the family and struggling to pay bills, medical bills and family bills, the employee got another medical diagnosis of a condition that would require another surgery. It was supposed to be done laparoscopically, allowing for two weeks of recovery, but the employee had exhausted all the accrued time and wanted to wait to get more accrued time and ask for more compassionate leave. And so waiting for all that to add up, the condition worsened. And now the surgery is going to be a six-week recovery period because the situation and this needing the surgery has gotten way worse. So the employee continues to put off the necessary surgery because they're concerned about losing pay and not having the time to cover it. So I bring that up just to, so we can understand, you know, why, why we need to look at this gap. And we know that long-term employees really drive the bulk of employee benefits. And sometimes like you don't expect to get sick. You don't expect to have a parent that's going to be profoundly impacted by Alzheimer's. You don't expect that you have a close friend that you consider family that has a major mental health crisis that you have to help attend to. So for employees lucky enough to be relatively healthy and to have acquired, you know, 1,200 hours over the course of 20 or 30 years to have healthy family members, you know, maybe they don't have an issue. But we always have to be aware, we don't really know what's going on with the employee next to us that works with us. There may be untold issues. And there may be someone who doesn't want to ask for compassionate leave because they're, they're, they're very private. Or let's face it, it may be somebody who's not that popular and they may not get the employee the compassionate leave because someone doesn't necessarily want to help that person. You never know what goes on in the dynamics of a workplace. So, you know, I'm hoping that we could have a system that would be a basic social safety net so that we would see that employees who are here even a year's time and something catastrophic happens to them, that they'd be able to, and maybe this is a refashioning of our catastrophic leave policy, to allow it to go into place earlier and allow it to be used for changing dynamics that we have with families these days. One thing more I wanted to say was that, let me see, sorry. Sorry.
Can I ask a question that's part of yours?
Yeah, sure.
I'll come back to you. With regards, in regards to compassionate leave, is there a prohibition? Or how does one ask for compassionate leave?
It's actually done anonymously. It's listed on the internal site, our, our internal, called the Bridge, our internal IT site. So you can go in and see who needs compassionate leave and you can make a donation.
So no one's prohibited from asking?
Well, actually, technically, we do not support employees asking another employee to donate because it really puts people in an awkward situation. So, and the employee who, who needs the compassionate leave and gets the donations does not know who donates it. It's, it's an anonymous system because you could really start to get some awkward dynamics in a work group. Right, so it's, it's, and go to counsel, our Vice Mayor Kubi's point. We do occasionally have employees who could use compassionate leave, but they don't really want to have their name on that list asking for it. So there are some times where people don't ask for it when they, when they really are eligible to. It's a personal decision that is up to that employee.
Right. So one of the last points I wanted to make is that it's important that, you know, we're going to maybe see this come back with an employee MOU. And I recognize that's the space where it could happen. But I think it's really important to think of this as a basic social safety net and to see it not negotiated as a bargaining chip, that something that employees are going to have to give up or negotiate away another benefit in order to gain this. This is something that cities across the country, over 60 cities, are adopting because they recognize that, that a city, in a city like Tempe that's so compassionate, that we want to be there when someone's in trouble, when someone's bonding with their child for the first time, that we want to be that city. And that is our values. And you so beautifully and eloquently expressed that to me yesterday. So I would hope that, that we ensure that it's not used as a bargaining chip, that somehow if we do this, you're going to have to give up that and we're going to use this to leverage and see what you really like in exchange. Because that's not the intention when I first initially brought this up to counsel. Another thing is like, what are our options for the current fiscal year? Because I realize the MOU that will come back to us that we'll, we'll decide on and vote for, there's still going to be a gap. And the employee that I described to you before is going to still suffer from that gap. So what, until we have a permanent ongoing benefit enshrined in an MOU, what can we do for employees that are suffering from these issues now?
I actually, I have two comments on that. The first is, you know, we have a lot of flexibility in how we approach problem solving at the city. So I know we have reopeners coming up and the MOUs are not finalized and go into effect until next July. But when we have a problem... But when we have a problem, I'm sure that senior management would support sitting down with the employee groups very soon to try to solve this problem. I don't see it really as a bargaining chip as much as saying, here's a problem, here's a gap, what can we do, how should we approach solving this? The other suggestion, too, I would have for the particular employee is that please, if you could suggest they come and at least talk to Heather, there might be a solution. I just, it's, and I do know, I hear from time to time, and believe me, if you had Heather's job, you'd go home every day feeling bad sometimes because she hears all of the trials and tribulations that happen. And, you know, in our workforce of over, you know, almost 1,600 employees, we have lots of unfortunate things that happen. So I do believe that, you know, I know that Heather goes out of her way to help people when she can, and so sometimes people may not even understand what is available. So I hope that employee would at least come and talk with her. And so, yes.
What I feel hearten that they'll receive, I think that there's direction, and maybe I'm wrong, maybe everyone could confirm this, that no one should be allowed to fall into unpaid or partial leave in those first 12 weeks of extended leave, that we need to find a way to ease that burden because the impact of having to have a reduced salary when we don't know someone's family status at home, that can be so devastating to someone's security.
Yeah, I would suggest if the council's okay with this, that we ask our staff, and I think you already suggested this, explore how we can cover some of the gaps that you identified so that no one is slipping through the cracks that you identified. And you've already used the word flexibility, but maintain that flexibility because we don't know what an employee might be or the situation he may be in, and we can't predict it. But having that flexibility, at least you recognize, and I really want to thank you, everybody, for recognizing there are some gaps that we're looking to try to solve. And I think it's important that how we solve those gaps is reach out to employee groups to see what we could work for them and see what, bring something back to us.
We'll be scheduling meetings very quickly.
Okay. Is that good?
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Catherine. All right. Feature agenda items. Yes, Vice Mayor Kivi?
So we do have the elections coming up in March 10th for council and for mayor. And identified in that community need survey was a concern about the access to campaign finance information. And I know that there are plans afoot, every two years, we do have a page where we devote to the candidates. And I was wondering if we could have IRS presentation about what that might look like this year and what information might be included. Sorry. What information might be included on that page? I know a resident had written to us suggesting that all candidates supply a resume and all their contact information, their Facebook site, their Twitter handle, just so people can become more informed about the candidates. And then we've heard from a number of complaints, and we see it in the survey, that people have a hard time finding the campaign finance information. And I wanted to do like a little diagram of it, but in order to find it, you type in campaign finance report, or you can go to the front page and see campaigns, and then you'll see, you click on, you put in someone's name for the name of the committee, and then you do a search, and then you'll see a list of donations. But you have to go over to the far right and click on a PDF, and there's 10 PDFs listed where they list all the donations. But that PDF is a PDF of the entire report, which is great, but you don't necessarily know that. It'd be so much easier to have a page that would list, have a campaign finance report that someone could just click on. I would think we need in this era of transparency to be more transparent. So I would just like to see what our plans are for that, for an IRS session coming up before the election so we can know.
Okay. Anybody else? Yes, Councilmember Adams?
We have consensus.
Just for Clark Poole, I would like to see if we can move that date up. I know that what I was told was it would be four years out yet, and I was wondering if we could make a presentation of how we could move that item a little bit further than four years.
Any consensus for that? Yeah, I don't know how we're going to do that.
I think it was a stretch to get it in a four-year plan to begin with.
We shouldn't be relitigating stuff that we've already made decisions on.
Well, when we made the decision, I didn't realize it was going to be four years out. So I just am bringing it up.
I think we wait, we have other CIP stuff that is coming through the process. I would wait.
You can address it during the budget.
I think we address it during the budget.
Okay. That's fine.
Anybody else? Seeing none. Committee of the Whole items? We have a call to the audience for Committee of the Whole. Is anyone wishing to address us under Committee of the Whole? We don't have any items for council direction or any new items for consideration. I don't see anyone in the public and then willing to address us. And then items in progress, anybody have anything?
So just to mention the Clean Era on Public Health Working Group with Councilmember Adams and Councilmember Chin. We have a 90-day report, I won't read that to you, but with the holidays coming up, I wondered whether we could help affirm and echo, mirror the Maricopa County Public Service Massages that they use on about no burn days and explain about wood smoke and how it can be harmful to our more vulnerable citizens and just help amplify the Maricopa County messages that go out themed around the holidays. It seems like that's a time where people really start to light wood fires. So I don't know, that's something we haven't really discussed as a group. We discussed wood fires, obviously, but I'm bringing it up now because I realize it's a little bit urgent in terms of time.
So your committee is looking, you want to bring it back?
No, no, we do have the committee, but I'm recognizing that this is, coming up with the holidays, there's not a lot of time, and we want to give our social media folks time to be able to get that messaging out.
Okay.
That would just echo the Maricopa County messages. They have all the messages there, so.
All right. Anybody else have any updates on?
Valmer.
Yes, Councilmember Herdona Savage?
Yeah, thank you very much. And I just want to say thank you so much for those supervisors, department heads, and those on the ground doing a lot of the work that have volunteered to be part of our city's very first advancing abilities, which is going to be a really great inclusion working group. I'm really excited, along with the Vice Mayor, just to hear from our employees to see how we can be a more inclusive community, what we can do to provide even better, great customer service. So I just want to take a second and say thank you so much for being willing to be involved and to be engaged and to do everything that we can to make this a really great organization, greater than it already is. And I'm looking forward to the work next week. So thank you. And thank you for everybody that's helped put this together. So those of you who haven't met Jonay, I mean, that poor girl, I mean, she's only been here how long now? And between the tardiata and this new event, and she's holding her own and doing a really great job, so thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Yep, anybody else?
Yeah, short-term vacation rentals, C-15. So it did report to the DRC on Tuesday and was generally approved. I think there's some concerns that our working group will address. And the Arizona League of Cities has announced that there'll be a couple of public forums about short-term vacation rentals, and we're getting that word out to our stakeholders. We have a sizable group of citizens who are lobbying in the legislature and trying to talk to all of our Tempe representatives, and we're urging them to go to those forums, attend those forums. I was hoping also they could, and I didn't get a chance to talk to you about this, Councilmember Navarro, since you're on the working group, but I know our legislative alert system, I think there were people signed up to receive alerts about short-term vacation rentals, and perhaps we could send them this information about the forums, if that's possible through our system.
Sure.
Pretty sure we have, I'm not sure if we have a specific legislative alert for that, that we collected names or just legislative alert periods, period, but.
I think we could also work with neighborhood services.
That's true, yeah.
We want to hear from residents, that's a good thing.
Anything else? Anybody? Seeing none? Mr. City Manager, do you have any announcements?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Just wanted to update the public that after a substantial process, the police department has announced the promotion of two new assistant chiefs who will be starting in December. One of them is Tempe Police Commander Mike Pooley, so congratulations to you, Mike, and also Assistant Chief of Police Sherry Burlingame from the City of Mesa, who has also had a long distinguished career in that city, and we're looking forward to her starting here in Tempe as well. So congratulations to both of them, and we look forward to their leadership in the Tempe Police Department.
I do want to recognize the Municipal Utilities from the City of Tempe recently won the Municipal, the Municipality of the Year from the Arizona Chapter of Solid Waste Association North America for, guess it, the SMART program, which is Save Money and Reduce, Reuse, and Recycle Tempe. So congratulations to our Municipality of the Year, our Utilities Division, so thank you for that. Great job, staff. That's awesome. And also hopefully see some of you guys tomorrow morning at 7:30 for the State of the City.
All right, maybe we'll go.
Oh, no.
You don't have to.
Of course, we're going to go support the mayor.
I just changed my speech now if you're not going, let me know. And then we want to wish the Sun Devil's luck tomorrow, or on Saturday against UCLA. With that?
Is there a birthday?
Day night.
Oh, yes, there is a birthday for a fellow council member that we're going to all sing happy birthday to him tomorrow, because his birthday is actually tomorrow, so happy birthday, Councilmember Navarro. What are you, 46, 36?
Forty-two.
Forty-two.
Oh, boy.
And also, I do want to recognize, I had the chance this morning, I went to McClintock High School, they were hosting their all Charger invitational swim meet for the East Valley. It was great to see so many of the schools out there and some of the Tempe schools and thank our staff and community services and Parks and Rec for everything that they've done to make that event happen. And next Thursday is the all-city meet that the city is heavily involved with, so thanks again for our staff. And it's always good to see, go back to my stomping grounds, my alma mater, McClintock, to see the swim meet. And by the way, the swimming facility looks fantastic. We need more seats because there's too many people there, but it's pretty good. Thank you. We adjourn.
Good morning. Thank you.